All right. Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you for coming to the Town of Beekman Planning Board this evening. If you'll take notice, we have exits all the way past the courthouse, down the hallway is one, one to your left and one right here. And if you all stand, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No, that is important. Yeah, I appreciate it. Did the board members have a chance to review the minutes for September of 2022, March 2023, and June 2024?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve them?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so the public knows, there was a change in staff during the pandemic, and we fell behind in the production of the minutes. But all meetings are recorded and available online. All right? So I've been... So the town website is also being redesigned, YouTube and through...
Video Ventures.
Yeah, YouTube prior to a certain date, and then after a certain date, it's available on the town website.
Also, Video Ventures has it.
Video Ventures? Yeah. All right. Look, you know, all you have to do, if you want a particular month and a particular year, you just call City Hall. They'll tell you where to find the video. You can also FOIA the minutes. But everything is available, either video or in print. We're just catching up in print right now. So we have three public hearings on the agenda tonight. So Pezzuto Lot Line. Dan, could you...
So the engineer for the applicant is still working with the DEC on the stream crossing application. So they've asked for us to be adjourned to the next meeting.
Anybody here for the Pezzuto Lot Line realignment? Here, bear with me one minute. Okay. Is anyone here for the Pezzuto Lot Line realignment? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the next planning board meeting.
That's September 19th, 2024, for the record.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is Duchess Contracting Corporation. Let's do this. How's that? Can everybody hear me okay? Yes? Okay. This is Duchess Contracting Corporation subdivision. It's Bischof Lane and Route 55. This is the project behind Van Skoye heading towards 55. So the way this evening's meeting will go here, all right, which is the public hearing, Brian, who's the architect, will give you background on the project, right? So the lot is owned, right, by Duchess Contracting Corporation, right? And for those of you who don't know, you know, when you get to this point, the application has been vetted, right? So it's a legal use, and you're here to comment and discuss your concerns about the project. Okay? Now, out of respect for everybody that has come here, and to permit everyone to speak, right, because that is the purpose of tonight's hearing, to allow everybody who wants to speak to speak. I'm not strict with the three-minute rule that is typically used at hearings. Please do not be redundant in your comments. Notes will be made, okay, by me, and your questions will be satisfied at the end of the hearing. So that is the purpose. Now, ma'am, you can't see. Is that your concern? Because also, we have this screen here where you'll be able to see what is on these, on the boards themselves, okay? But realize this. When you approach the podium, all right, you first sign in, all right, and then we're going to ask you your name and your address, okay? You don't have to live in Beekman to speak. Anybody can come to a hearing and speak. You're going to speak to the board, all right? You're not going to speak to anybody in the audience or to the applicant directly either. We're here to hear you. Okay? And also, I have, they graciously accepted my invitation. It's Duchess County Water and Waste. We have the director, deputy director, and project manager here. And what they've decided to do, which I'm appreciative of, is after I open the hearing and the board approves the opening of the hearing, the architect will speak, the town engineer will also comment, and if the attorney has anything to say, he will speak as well. Then we will open it up for comment, and you'll approach the podium. After, Duchess County Water and Waste will speak and attempt to answer any questions that you may have. But they're going to confine their answers to your questions. So have your questions prepared. All right. May I have a motion to open the public hearing for Duchess Contracting Corporation?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good.
Normally, I note, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the planning department reviewed the mailings and the legal ad and have confirmed that they are in order.
Yes. And so I've also been approached, and comments have been made, that the mailing was not sufficient or done completely. The way it works is there's a certain radius for subdivisions, and everybody within that radius received a notice. Anybody outside of that radius heard about it through the grapevine or whatever. Okay? And that's purely legal rules that are followed. Okay. Brian?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just going to give the public a rundown of where we are in the process. We're step two of very many. We're not seeking approvals tonight. We're seeking public input from the public and also every agency that will be touching this project, agencies, Duchess County Water and Waste Water, Duchess County Health Department, New York State DOT. This is the first of many. We're getting input from everybody to see if there is a problem, what the problem is, and how we mitigate it. So I'll give you guys a brief history of where we're at in the process, and I'll walk you through the proposal. And then again, tonight, we're here to receive comment from the public and agency officials. But we've been working on this project for a number of years now. It's part of Town Center. Town Center has a master plan that speaks to secondary road access, developing a secondary road along Route 55 that serves some of the existing vacant properties. That code goes back 15, 20 years. It was developed by the Town Board. This project fits into that Town Master Plan concept, where it pushes the buildings toward the Route 55 and toward the proposed town road that would be coming down Bischof Lane, which would be realigned to a 90, and then it would make a turn toward the south to start creating that secondary road. The buildings are shown here in architectural style. We tried to show different architectural features and reveals to break up the length of the building. These buildings, again, were designed using the Town Code Master Plan concept and architectural features. Part of this is...
Brian, if you could just pause one minute. I'd like Aletha to bring up, yeah, the appropriate map. And maybe, Aletha, if you could, if you feel comfortable, just show the road that Brian is referring to. I think, yeah. Okay. Would anybody like me to stand and point by the...? Yeah? All right. Okay.
All right. So walking through this, again, we're in the very, we're in the very early stages of this. We've done a preliminary drainage analysis, a preliminary traffic study. We've talked to county officials with Duchess County Planning, gotten their comments, their feedback, also Duchess County Water and Waste Water would be involved. So again, we're at the beginning stage of this process. What we're proposing is two buildings. It'll have a total of 48 units total. The rear building is located, that's the front building the chairman just pointed to, will be parking lots, it will be a parking lot behind it that will serve the front building. Behind that, toward the west, we're going to have a sport court area, a recreational feature. That is required by the Town Code. Then we move into our secondary access that moves south, creating that secondary road to our neighbors to the south. Yep. That's the intersection right there. We come in. We'll have a building behind that secondary road. We work with Colliers Engineering. This site will require a left turn lane into the site. So if you're driving toward Poughkeepsie, there's going to be a left turn lane that would allow traffic to come in and create that Town Center road. We did a traffic study. It's under review by the New York State DOT very early on. It will require a road widening. There will be a drainage improvement along that corridor. This site will have to meet New York State DEC requirements specific to stormwater. We had a public hearing last month. We did hear a lot of input.
If I may, Brian, if you'll possibly, last month was not a public hearing, right? There was an issue with the mailings. Not all of them were anticipated correctly. So we had a lot of individuals here answer questions, but it was not an official public hearing. Also, as he's speaking about the stormwater plan, this, if you could talk about this, because, Brian, there's a lot of concerns downstream, downhill, and 55. And the, if you could talk about what you've done to capture the water on this block.
Again, very early on in the process, we had done preliminary soil testing. This site will have to meet New York State DEC regulations as far as water quality and quantity. We all know Route 55, the drainage system, is not the best. There's a lot of runoff associated with that corridor. If you look at the heavier rains and the intensities we've had, it's been more prevalent lately. But with this concept, the object is to capture the water. Capture the water, treat it locally near the buildings, and then mitigate through retention, and then discharge off-site. We can't increase the amount of flow coming off the site in a post-development condition. We've talked to a couple of the board members. Obviously, this site has changed over the past 20 years. Where it used to be wooded, then it turned into meadow, and there was some regrading done about 20 years ago. We agreed to look at that condition, that wooded condition, in a pre-development condition. So we can't increase the rate of runoff coming off of this site. We have to hold that. We can't impact downstream neighbors. We did hear from a number of neighbors at the last meeting, and we are cognizant of that. Working with the DOT and the left turn lane design, there most likely will be some kind of drainage improvement along the Route 55 corridor to help facilitate some of the runoff with this project. Again, it's in the preliminary stage. It hasn't been designed yet. It's been identified. And we're going to work through design with the DOT, Town Planning Board, and town consultants. With this project, there will have to be coordination with Duchess County Water and Waste Water. We understand that Dalton, that the system in Dalton Farms has its issues. It has its capacity limits. With this project, we are in the initial phase. We had to identify unit count so we can back into water and sewer demand specific to this project. We have to work with Duchess County Water and Waste Water Authority. There will have to be additional analysis done. If there is an improvement that is required, we will identify it, and we will identify how to improve that system if need be, where need be. I don't know where that improvement is right now. All I'm doing is opening this up to the public, to DOT, Duchess County Water and Waste Order, to try to see if and how we can improve that system to support this project. It's probably a multi-phase design concept where there have to be analysis. Originally, this project had, there was speak, there was mention of an allocation, not allocation, but commitment of 10,000 gallons per day. That discussion, that analysis that was done a couple of years ago was the basis for trying to incorporate this concept with this piece of property. I understand things change. I understand the system changes. I understand the studies may need to be updated. Again, this is trying to bring all the information to the forefront to allow those conversations and that analysis to happen. Specific to stormwater design, we've done feasibility tests out there. We've done soil tests. From a DEC design standpoint, in concept, this plan does work. It's subject to additional review. Same thing with DOT. The left turn lane is subject to additional review and design. We have come up with a screening plan for the development with landscape architect, following the guidelines in the master plan.
If, Leland, if you could bring up the landscape plan, please. Indigenous trees, I believe. If you could talk about those a little bit, and then...
Right. So the master plan speaks, it does identify how landscaping features should be presented. So we have street trees along the proposed road and sidewalk area. There will be a sidewalk along Route 55. It will eventually tie in the properties as they become developed in the future. You'll have low-growth shrubs around the proposed buildings, and as you work your way out to the parking lot areas and along the street corridor, you'll have bigger deciduous trees, again, following the concepts, but then...
Can you please stand closer to the mic so that I can make some more of the line as I speak?
Again, all of these files are on site with the planning department. If anybody would like to review, they are on file with the planning department. Again, we've been through this process with the planning board for quite some time. Again, we're at the initial stage. If we go back in how we got here, there's a master plan, again, that was developed 15 years ago. The Town Board is the board that creates the Town Code. We are here to follow that Town Code. We're not asking for any variances on this. This is a permitted use. It does follow the master plan. The goal of the planning board in there is coordinating review from other agencies and making sure we follow that Town Code. If there is a disagreement with the public on how densities are defined and how the master plan is defined, that's more of a Town Board issue. Again, we're just, we're following what's been implemented in that master plan. Again, 48 units, two buildings, parking located behind each building. We're going to have a left turn lane in. There's been an awful lot of misinformation online in this town and in the town union now with the projects that we work on. This project is not geared toward a specific demographic. This is, again, step two of very many. We are just trying to get our planning and our design in place and coordinated with different agencies. Other than that, Chairman, I don't know if you have any other additional questions.
I just think it would be nice if the public had a chance to see the elevations. Is there a digital screen?
For the architectials?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just going to pull them up right now.
So the planning board also acts as the architectural review. And between the landscape design and the elevations here that we're seeing, we've come to a decision as a board, and we'd like your input. So this, Brian, if you talk about the materials, the tin, the widows' wall, and the other elements that you used to break up.
Right. So in following with the discussions that we've had with town and what the planning board feels is an architectural style that would fit this corridor, we've done, we've done some cultured stone in the front. We've done some lintels above the windows. We've done relief with pushing portions of the building forward and then setting portions back. We've tried to change roof lines and incorporate some timber accents, cupolas, in the design. We've also had some vertical features with board and batten, again, to try to, to try to break up the building and the massing of the building. And again, this has been, this has been developed over the course of some time with the planning board. But both buildings would be represented by this picture. The buildings front and back are the same. They're going to be mirrored. So this would be the front of the building and also the back of the building. Size would match too. Other than that, we're three floors. So there's no commercial element to this. This is strictly 48 apartments. As far as restrictions on the apartments and rentals, we haven't had any discussions with the board yet. But again, this is, this is not geared to a specific demographic. This is not low-income housing. If you, as you can see here, with a design element in what's involved here, there's a certain financial price point with this project that would lend itself to a higher price point.
Thank you, Brian. Yep. Dan, would you like to comment? For those that don't know, Dan is our town engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have much to say. We have a June 20th, 2024 review letter out there. Brian's office has been very receptive to our comments in the past and is continuing to work through some of those items that we have in there. But other than that, I can get into any specific questions if you have any for me. Other than that, I would kind of defer and get into the public hearing phase.
Okay. Greg, our town council, for those of you that don't know?
I have nothing really to add at this stage.
Good. Any board members? No? Mr. Schwark?
No.
Mr. Schwark is chairman of our Conservation Advisory Committee. He's responsible for three laws. We're all volunteers. Ms. Garrido is our legislator for our district. Rob Lapaine is a landscape architect. I own a pharmacy, and I'm a landlord, and I live in Dalton Farms myself. So Mr. Schwark's responsible for steep slopes laws, our timber laws, and also our wetland laws. He helps secure and preserve 505 acres of Beekman property that is spectacular, and it's worth looking up online. You'll see it prominently displayed, and it was quite an accomplishment. It has taken Mr. Schwark two or three decades to accomplish this of his own time. Yeah. I won't say anymore, because he and I have a running joke that. So with that said, the public hearing is open. All right? Who would like to go first? Who's the brave soul?
I just want to add one thing to the public. We're going to respond in writing to all public comment. With submission deadlines and the way they fall, the ability to put that package together is not going to be able to be attained for the September meeting. So respectfully, we're going to request that this gets opened or deferred to the October meeting so we have a chance to respond to public comment, just so the board knows, so that we know we're not asking for it to be closed or any approvals or anything like that tonight.
Right. And just so you know, okay, we've got monitors in front of us. We're not hiding our faces. We're... Well, you can come up here, and you can sit right next to me if you'd like.
Why don't you get a laptop?
Why don't I get a laptop? Well, how about that? All right. We're also considering taxpayer dollars, too, and these are very effective. How's that? Can you see my face? Anybody like to see more of me, or is this good enough? Huh? All right. Now, as you're speaking, this isn't going to be a conversation. All right? You can ask us questions, but we're not necessarily going to reply at that point in time. Remember, it's for the purpose of giving everybody an opportunity to speak to us and so we can hear. We're not here to speak to you during the hearing. We're here to hear, note your comments, and take them very seriously. It's as simple as that. So who would like to approach first? Please, you deserve it. Mr. Crane?
Thank you. Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. I want to say, first of all, that the applicant and the architect has been very professional in everything he's done. There's an article in the Sunday New York Times in the real estate section, talks about a park that's being destroyed in order to build houses in Manhattan. And the kids wrote letters in saying, a lot of the kids wrote letters saying, you know, what's going to happen to our park? We need these trees to breathe. And what's going to happen to the animals? You have on Bischof Lane a very large meadow, which is very rich in wildflowers, bee balm, loo strifin, all kinds of beautiful wildflowers, which supports a variety of wildlife, including, it's just full of bees and pollinating insects. And it also supports squirrels and mice, and I'm sure rabbits and grasshoppers, and it also supports a variety of birds. It's a beautiful meadow that is going to be destroyed for this development. It's, the meadows also function to protect against soil erosion, runoff. The National Forest Service has meadows that have a sponge-like bottom that holds in water that's necessary for the environment. And it's going to be replaced by houses, parking lots, sidewalks, a picket ball court, lots of, it looks like a lot of concrete and asphalt. It's going to contribute, which will contribute to pollution runoff, because asphalt, the natural soil and vegetation absorbs the pollutants, the runoff, whereas asphalt is like a friend to the runoff, the pollution, and it lets it flow down. It's going to make things much worse. And people might say, well, what's the big deal? You know, this is just one meadow. There's meadows elsewhere. But this is how, this is how we lose it all, one at a time, one pretty meadow, one beautiful meadow at a time. The master plan, yes, it wants development here, but the larger goal of the master plan, the larger goal, the comprehensive plan, is to protect the environment. That's why they're pushing the building in a certain area. So you've got to keep in mind the larger goal. And I think that each community, if it can do it, it can to protect nature and protect these pollinating insects. My gosh, their populations are receding at a rapid rate. A huge amount of vegetation worldwide, it depends on these pollinating insects, the bees in particular, but also butterflies and others. And if each community could do what it can to protect them, it would, we would be doing our part. So I would ask, you know, consider the environment that's being destroyed, what can be done in the meantime to protect the trees and all the wildlife. And I would, I would, I don't know if it can be worked out to make things more And I would, I don't know if it can be worked out to make things more permeable and protect the meadow, I don't know. I would put it somewhere else. Thank you.
And who would like to go next? Please, state your name and your address, please, when you approach the mic.
Hi, my name is Gloria Deneen. I live on 39, at 39 Van Scoy. My property, my backyard faces 55, and I can see the lights from the post office plaza, and I can hear the traffic from 55. I have lived in the Bronx for 45 years. I was a renter among apartment-style living. It was crowded. The city lights were on all night long, which meant that people stayed out all night long. With crowds, there is more traffic and noise. Our neighbors would play their music outside until 3:00 a.m. on any given random Tuesday. There is also litter and crime. I moved here to the town of Beekman to get away from that style of living. I moved here to this town of Beekman that is beautiful, quiet, clean, and safe. There's a sense of peace and community here that I have never experienced before and that I really needed. The schools here are amazing. They have small classes that are perfect for learning compared to the overcrowded schools in the city. Here in Beekman, most people are home each night by 9:30 p.m., and with consideration for each other, we turn off our lampposts to avoid too many lights in our neighborhood. There's an unspoken curfew that eliminates noise and trouble after dark. It's quiet, it's safe. We came here to find peace and we found it. Now that I'm a homeowner, I take pride in my home. My neighbors, who are also homeowners, take pride in their property and our entire community. We watch each other's back here. When you start creating apartment buildings, you bring in more people in a small condensed area, which will cause traffic, noise, lights, and long lines at the grocery store and the post office. With crowds, you will also see more litter and eventually more crime. If this building offers 48 new apartments, that means we will see about two cars or more to each apartment. That means we may see anywhere from 48 to 100 or more vehicles on the local road and all over our small town. The left turn that is being created is not enough to help with the overflow of cars being driven all over the rest of our town. That also means if each apartment has children, there could be 48 to 100 or more children needing to attend school. If our elementary and middle schools are receiving 50 or 100 more students all at once, they will probably have to hire more staff and possibly build an addition on the schools, which will cause our school taxes to go up. Here are some questions that we would like answered. Is the applicant installing streetlights or lampposts? If so, how many? And is it possible to request that he use some type of dim lighting?
Sorry, that's my loon. Please, continue.
Okay. Is the town considering how they would curb the influx of too many children enrolling into our school system at one time? Will the applicant consider renting only to adults 55 and older to prevent the overflow of students in our schools? How does the applicant plan to manage curfew, litter, and noise after a certain hour? Is there going to be a tax abatement on this property that will ultimately affect everyone else in this community? Will the applicant be residing in or around the apartment complex? Does the applicant own other properties similar to this one? If so, where are they located? Is the applicant open to decreasing the number of apartments or open to other options such as making it an office building that could bring in jobs instead? Thank you.
Just so you don't think I had my phone on, that was the timer, and the loon is somewhere under here somewhere. So, who else would like to approach the mic? Please, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dan Ubecky from Dalton Farms. I live very close to the water treatment plant and the water source. What I'm concerned about is how we're gonna support those additional units with the water source we have today. I know when it was built 25 years or so ago, I believe there's a number of wells. How do we know if the wells can support additional expansion? More importantly, how are we gonna treat waste to that complex? Has anyone ever considered tapping the water system that's along Route 55 to support these units? My concern only is that I hope the Dutchess County Water System and you folks will pay attention to what the Dutchess County Water System is going to do, or propose to do, to expand their units. We cannot compromise what we have at Dalton Farms. We have water sources that are in trouble today because we lose pressure, and we have a fire that happened, what, year last, last year? You drained the entire system because of a catastrophe, but that can't happen again. So, whatever you do with the Dutchess County Water System, it has to be monitored by you, approved by you, and reassured that the county is gonna support us properly. Okay?
Sir, if you could repeat your name and address, please?
My?
Please.
Am I good at something?
No.
Not yet. One more time.
Dan Ubecky.
Dan Ubecky. And your address?
23, Lord and Land.
Thank you.
I live at 8 Osborne Glen.
Christensen was your last name, right, ma'am?
Correct.
And your first name?
First name is Sue.
Sue?
Yes.
Osborne Lane?
Glen.
Glen, and the address, the number?
8 Osborne Glen.
Thank you.
First of all, I know that every town has to grow, and I hope that what we all have to say has an impact on your decisions. I know that this subdivision, as well as the other proposed divisions, subdivisions, are gonna have an impact on our roads, our traffic, schools, taxes, our fire department, which is volunteer, our security, we do not have our own police force, and we also have wetlands and streams, which I believe is part of the watershed. That's a big concern. And then, you know, it's already been voiced about the Dalton Water and Sewer. I know that there's a lot, lot of us that have, probably all of us, that have low water pressure, we smell the sewage from time to time. That facility is old, and we certainly don't want to be hit with a capital improvement because there is a new subdivision that comes in and taps into that system. And like Dan just said about, that water gets depleted if there's a significant fire. So, you know, if there was something major to happen, that could be a big issue. This is also gonna add a lot of individuals to our community, along with the other subdivisions. And personally, I moved here because this is a small community, it had a wonderful country feel. If I wanted a populated area, I would've moved to Fishkill. So, I wonder, if you allow all these subdivisions, are we gonna start losing that feel? And what benefit is this to our community? I believe that there have been other applications that have been denied because of impact to neighbors and to traffic, and this is so much larger than any of those other projects that we know have been denied in the past.
Ms. Christensen, let me just make a statement about that, because I think it's important. And I'm not sure if Brian addressed it. The original proposal was for close to 100 units before this board's tenure, all right? That's the right word, yeah. Tenure, I think, is correct. Before I began as chairman and some of the other members were on this board. It's been scaled down considerably by half, and a property owner in the right zone, following the laws that are local, county, and state, have rights as well, all right? And I just wanted to say that, all right? Meaning that this board does not have the power. I ate up some of your time. I'm gonna have to give it back. The loon just yelled at me. So, the board does not have the power, right, to just arbitrarily deny an application, right? That would occur in another country, but not this one. Okay? So, I just want you to understand the scope of what we do. Please, continue.
So, that being said by you, does that mean that any company can come in here and request, put an application in, and you do not necessarily have the authority to deny that application?
I'm gonna allow our attorney to answer.
Well, if I could just interject.
Please.
I'm sorry, we can't have a conversation. This is more of, please give your comments, and then we'll allow other people to give comments.
I'm just responding to what was just said.
If you don't mind, just this one time, all right? I would like counsel to just describe what the scope of this board is and our authority.
First of all, unpopular projects come before boards all the time.
You can't hear me?
They need you to speak into the mic.
I don't even know if my mic works.
Maybe we could have one volume control officer here, all right? Yeah, that way.
The town code dictates what projects can come before a Planning Board and zoning designations. And if a project happens to fit within the zoning designation, it can proceed as of right. This is one of those projects. However, there are environmental considerations under secret, and that's what this board is going to be doing, is giving a hard look at the environmental aspects of the project.
Thank you. Okay. Please.
Okay. No, I just was gonna reiterate what some other people said, but...
They can approach the podium. Thank you, Ms. Christensen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Actually, I believe the gentleman in the purple shirt wanted to speak, and then you will approach, sir. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. James Mahoney, 127 Roosevelt Drive, Dalton Farm. Just to echo what my neighbors have said, I'm personally not against development, smart development, I think is what we always hoped for. I've been living here 28 years, and it really hasn't happened yet. To me, this isn't smart, but be that as it may, I think the issue you have is water. I live on top of the hill, and there's a water pumping station that is constantly broken, spilling water, wasting water all over the place. I have zero confidence in DCWWA. They, you know, don't respond quickly, they don't repair quickly. We have a 30-foot pumping station that doesn't work very well. We have water pressure problems, and of course, last year with the fire at Barton, we had no water. So, I guess my question is, is there an independent water study being done, independent from Dutchess County wastewater, that can be provided to residents of Beekman to get comfortable with that, that there is water, that there's not a water problem? Sewage, I think, as our neighbor said, we have strange smells coming from the primary pumping station down on Rec. Road. So, I think the issue is, you know, the infrastructure's not there to support 48 condominiums and 200-plus people, let alone all the other concerns about the environment, which are significant, as the gentleman pointed out at the beginning. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 62 Sterling Drive. I bought a house here two years ago and moved back. I grew up in Dutchess County, went to Arlington High School, left here probably 35-ish years ago, lived in New York City for a long time, and to echo what the other woman said, came back because I want to live where I grew up, in an environment that is small-town and doesn't have large apartment buildings and screaming people and traffic. And, you know, what I've grown up in with 35 years ago has changed a lot. When I try to make a left-hand turn out of Dorn Road, where my elderly folks still live in their house, it can take me five, six, seven minutes to just get out of that road because the traffic is so bad on Route 55. But my question really comes back to what Brian, the architect, kept saying, he kept using the word preliminary, and it feels to me like you put the cart before the horse in a lot of this development, and, you know, that we're just talking about environmental impact now. I think that the community deserves to see those environmental impact studies if they were done 15 years ago. I don't think that that holds water today, literally holds water, since the environment has changed so much. And I think that those should be looked at, the community has a right to review them and see them, and that's all. I really think that we need to be mindful of what we're doing in this community if we want to keep it the way it's been. So, thank you.
My name's Jerry Frey. I live on 128 Indian Pass.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Alitha is writing down.
128 Indian Pass.
Indian Pass.
Mm-hmm. Mine is prison. And so, to kind of echo what everybody's saying, as far as smart development, I think if you look along the Route 55 corridor, some of the stuff we've had makes sense and some not so much, right? Personally, wouldn't mind some type of mixed use, so at least, as far as comments and questions, one, is this developing the whole parcel? Five, I think it's like multiple acres back there, or is this only a portion of it? And as far as the two buildings, I think to have more of an interactive feel and kind of that Main Street USA, I'd like to see if there's, an opportunity being that this is early on, to identify unit, style, and mix. I think we can try to encourage certain renters, if it's gonna be solely rentals, depending upon how many bedrooms each unit is, is it two-bedroom, one-bedroom, are they studios, are they three-bedroom? And for the front building along the corridor, I think it'd be a great idea to see stores, small shops, if, you know, the applicant's open to that, you know, it's kind of interactive with the community, and I think can provide, you know, you don't see high school kids, you know, working small shops anymore and those type of activities. So, I think that could be better than looking at just like Dollar Generals and all these other things that, you know, have a lot of vagrants hanging around. So, just my couple of thoughts on it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wanda Newell. I live at 22 Tibbetway. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I don't see how this Planning Board is going to guarantee that the usage of an overloaded water system is going to remain functional in the future. We have, that water system was specifically designed to acco- We have, that water system was specifically designed to accommodate Dalton Farms. It was then accommodated Main Street. It now is, the houses over, across from Beekman Firehouse, was, gained access to that water supply. And there's homes that will not, homeowners that will not be affected at all by the use of this development by that water supply. They have wells, and I'm not discounting or throwing shade on anyone who has a well, because the question is, in the other town, how it would affect an aquifer. So, I don't understand why a development, if you're going to approve something like this, doesn't, feels that they can tap into a water supply. Why can't they create their own well? Why can't they do their own sewage system? If they're going to put this kind of money into this kind of development, it shouldn't be, that's the only place where water comes from.
Somebody's writing. John Halpin, H-A-L-P-I-N, 3 Bush Creek Lane.
So, I live in Dalton Farm, and I moved in 24 or 5 years ago, and you probably had a meeting like this about me moving in and developing Dalton Farm. Like, you know, no offense to everybody here, but we all want to be the last ones in, right? Like, no more building as soon as I'm in. So, to the board, I understand that. I come from police-fire background, emergency service background, and I understand the impact this is gonna have on our non-police and non-fire that exist. Yeah, I mean, we're relying on volunteers and state and county. That's not, and I know it's not a question-and-answer period, I'm just here to say some things, but questions I would love you guys to answer when you can. Everyone referred to smart building, smart development. To me, that means we're answering a problem. I don't see that many homeless here, and that's great. So, are we answering a homeless problem, a housing problem? Is it a Dutchess County problem? Who's gonna be moving in here? Is it 55 and older? If it is, can I have an application? You know, my parents would love to live here. I like, what's the real usage gonna be here? And if it's gonna be, you know, low-income, who's low-income? If it's not Dutchess County low-income, I don't need low-income moving in from other places. If it's, if we're not solving our problems, then I don't want to solve someone else's problems. If we're not solving our community, our neighborhood problems, I don't want to solve someone else's problems. I don't need people moving in from, whether it's Jersey or the Bronx or wherever, because, you know, we're filling a quota or something like that. We're putting a development here. I understand, nobody wanted me here, I'm here. Nobody wants them here, they're probably gonna be here. But a little control over, you know, call it smart developing, what problem are we solving? Or is it just money? Also, Dutchess County Water, they're gonna do a survey. These are customers, they want them. Their survey's gonna say, "Come on in! The water's fine!" So, I mean, you know, if, maybe, maybe we can pay for, somebody can pay for an independent survey, like one of the gentlemen said. So, I got. Everybody else, great job you're doing. Best of luck.
As I mentioned earlier, Dutchess County Water Waste is here, and they're gonna speak about Dutchess County Water and Waste. They are a quasi-public-private organization, I believe I'm saying that correctly. I'll let them clarify. That's a question actually to them that they'll answer, because I'd like to hear an answer to that question. Also, it has, Dalton Farms, as the lady mentioned, is only one of the users of that plant. It was sold, and the loan, I believe, this is another question, that has appeared on our tax bills, is up this year, I believe. All right? And I believe also, and that's a question, that there is new designs in the works for the upgrade of the unit, of the plant itself. So, these are my questions to Dutchess County Water and Waste. Who else would like to speak? Sir, please.
My name is Harold Petzer, 2496 Route 55. I live right next door to this project. Since they started, I've been there since 1987, 37 years I've lived there. I'm not very happy with this project from the get-go. When they did their excavation, they tore out both of my property survey markers, front and back. And I had a footing drain that came out right at the edge of the property, and that they had raised eight or nine feet. And I spoke to the builder's father, and he said, "No problem, I connect to my pipe." They had their drainage for their parking lots in. He said, "No problem, I connect to my pipe." So, the first big rainstorm we had, the water was bubbling out of the ground by my garage. So, I went down to where my footing drain was, and I dug it up, and what they did was put a big rock in front of it and bury it. So, there was no connection to their drainage pipes. They had huge 100-foot ash trees. There were, five pieces came out of one stump, and they dug alongside it, and they tore all the roots out. The first big windstorm came along, and it blew them right through my garage roof. I'm also worried about water. What's gonna happen with the water runoff? I have eight covert pipes in my driveway, and when we get a big rain, three or four inches in a big hurry, they can't handle it. And I lost my driveway four times. And where's, and the water is going right into their property, what are they gonna do with it? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Also worried, how many three-story buildings do we need in Town of Beekman?
I have a question from the West.
Please. Not allowed unless you expose yourself.
Manny Bogadis. I live at 176 East Meadowbrook Lane. My mother's property is 2470 Route 55, which is right next to the Holding Pond. I got a piece of land behind my mother on Bischoff Lane. From the last meeting that was here, that wasn't official, official unofficial or whatever, all the minutes and everything is still what we talked about, of the water problem that we had and everything, that's still...
Yes.
Okay. That's, I'm just concerned about the water that comes out of the Holding Pond, that everybody that's from Dalton here, we got well, and we got plenty of water where we are, because it all flows out of that pond and floods my mother's backyard and everything, and then floods everybody down below us too. So, that's my issue with that.
I appreciate everyone who can't hear for reminding us to speak into the mic because it's good for Aletha. Every word that is spoken at these meetings, she transposes into writing, so you have access to that information. Who else would like to speak?
Oh, I didn't. I did not get, last time I got a certified letter, I had to go sign for it. I did not get a letter at my house about this meeting. The only reason I knew, because I was here last time.
Okay. I'm gonna let the attorney answer that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Linda Genovese. I'm at 34 Tibbetway in Dalton Farm. My biggest main concern, like everyone else, is the water issue.
May I interrupt you, and I apologize for this? All right? If, because I'm really looking forward to having Dutchess County Water and Waste speak. Now, if no one has mentioned your issue with the water, right, and you have a unique item, please discuss it. And I'm not preventing you from speaking. I just want you to know, a lot of what everyone wants to know about water is waiting right behind you. All right? Yeah?
It's fine. I said that was the main reason why I came down here, but when he presented those issues, he also talked about sidewalks. Now, I know different people in different areas. Some homeowners are responsible for their sidewalks, and there are other areas where the town is responsible for sidewalks. Who is gonna be responsible for the snow cleanage on the sidewalks? And if the town has to pick up the tab, how does that affect our taxes?
Mary O'Connell, 12 Mount Pleasant, Dalton Farm. So, what I've heard tonight is that we have a lot of natural and infrastructures that are gonna be impacted by this project. And I think we need to put the brakes on it, at the very least, and do a whole lot more studying on the natural impacts, the infrastructure impacts, the tax impacts. And I'd like to see the results of those studies published, for everyone to see, and made public where they can find that publication. That's what I have to say.
Please.
Gloria Hadley, 38 Thomas Road, Poughkeepsie, Dalton Farm. I agree with everyone who's talked about the water problem. My next-door neighbor, I live in a townhouse, just spent thousands of dollars to replace their sewage drainage, and I would like to know what Dutchess County Waste and Water would do, is doing about that. Apparently, they said it was old and not adequate, and that we're just gonna add more problems to this area. Also, I'd like to know, is this a project looking for a home? Or are we gonna have that, another project on the, I think it was Clapp Hill and Alexi Lane, which is in, I went to the Union Vale Planning Board? It looks like the same architecture, is it? Or are these two different projects? You're gonna have one on that side and one on the other side?
Allow me to clarify. That project has nothing to do with us here. That is Union Vale.
I know, but it borders Beekman on one side, and this will border on the other side. So, we're like, we're getting squeezed in the middle?
Dan, if you could comment, I think it's important for the public to realize that that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, so, that property is completely under the jurisdiction of the Town of Union Vale Planning Board. Any of the development activity is completely located within the Town of Union Vale. I'm not aware of any correlation between that project and this project. I think it's different owners, may have similar architecture, this is...
No, it's the same architect, because I saw him speak there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it's the same company.
Same architects tend to use similar design characteristics in the buildings they design, so if it happens to look similar to these buildings, then, you know, so be it.
Well, the people there were also concerned with their water, and we all share the water around here, so, that's what I'm saying. If we're getting squeezed in between two of these, that's gonna be even more of a problem.
Please, hi.
I was hanging in the corner. Hi, I'm Lori DeRosa. I have two addresses. 161 Palmer Circle, and the other one is, I'm privileged to be a local business owner. So, I'm at 2643 Route 55. So, I have a couple of concerns, and I really feel bad for the people in Dalton with the water and sewage issue. My big concern is gonna be the left-hand lane, turning lane into Bischoff. People can't even follow the no-left-hand turn into Stop &amp; Shop. And yet, I'm not joking, it's crazy. And I know it's gonna have to widen the whole thing, like how much of that is gonna impact the roadway and things coming off. I'm pretty close to Bischoff, the business end is. My other concern is, we get some water drain off, like the drainage is just so poor there that when we get those big, heavy storms, I gotta wait a week or two for my lawn guy to mow my front property. So, those are the two concerns there. And I just have one more question, is, not for now, or maybe it's in the town website or something, is, what is the jurisdiction and proximity for people to be notified about either subdivisions, or new construction, or name changes, or new developments in Plaza or whatever? Like, what is the jurisdiction to have that? Who gets notified and who doesn't? So, if that can be addressed at some point, that would be helpful, both as a resident of this great town and as a local business owner. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just answer that question really quick right now. Our town code requires that subdivisions are notified within 250 feet of the subject property involved with the subdivision. Site plans and special use permits are 500 feet from the subject property. That's in our town code.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I agree that the Union Vale project is not full within the proximity of your, you know, you're not the jurisdiction of authority there, but I think it, I think it's important, and I think it has some impact on, on the overall environmental studies and the traffic studies and things like that. If there's gonna be an additional, you said this was originally 100, I don't know what the Union Vale thing is, maybe it's 200, maybe it's 100, maybe it's 50, but if there didn't be that many more people residing in the surrounding areas, that's gonna be part of the impact, and I would really like that to be included in all the studies. Maybe it's not gonna be part of the water, but as far as the environmental slash traffic slash law enforcement, fire, things like that, it would be great if you guys could include that.
If, before you speak again, ma'am, is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak? Because we usually don't double up, but I'm kind of easy that way. Is there anyone else? Please, ma'am.
Right. I think that we, you should consider the impact that just Barton Orchards has had on the traffic, and how things were planned or not planned at Barton Orchards, because anybody who's trying to get to their home, especially during harvest season, or when Barton Orchards decides to have a festival, the traffic is outrageous. It's, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. If you need an emergency vehicle to come from Beekman Road onto Beekman Road, the traffic is backed up tremendously. You can't guarantee, you're saying that you're going to fix Route 55 to accommodate this. There's no accommodations for how Barton Orchards just uses private roads as main access roads. So, that's, to me, an example of how there's not a lot of faith in how this is going to be engineered, when approvals have been given to other businesses without any consideration to the impact on traffic, and, you know, just enjoyment of our town. There's, you can't say that that was done, that's been done properly, and that hasn't been accommodated. I'm not trying to switch to another issue, but there is no traffic control here. There's no traffic lights. I mean, it's just, and now, this is going to be just added traffic.
So, if there isn't, and I don't want to assume that there isn't, if there isn't anyone else who would like to approach the podium, I'd like to, are we gonna keep the public hearing open, counsel? While... Yes. Dutchess, okay. Very good. Jonathan. So, Jonathan is the deputy commissioner of Dutchess...
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director of Dutchess County Water and Waste.
Give me a moment to get set up here so that I can speak to the mic and not have to crouch.
Jonathan, maybe if you point it straight up.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
There you go.
I have a quiet voice. How's this? Okay, that's good. If I start to step back, one person could say, "I'm happy to, you know, come back to the mic, I do speak kind of quietly." So, great, good evening. My name is Jonathan. My name is Jonathan Terns, and I'm Deputy Director for the Duchess County Water and Waste Water Authority. I'd like to thank the board, the committee, as well as the consultants, the applicant, and the community for coming out tonight. You're all very passionate about your water and sewer needs, and we're here to speak to that tonight. Let me give you a little bit of background on the Water Authority, just a little bit of an agenda of how I'll speak. First part, I'll get a little discussion of what the Water Authority is, then I'll speak to the applicant's project and our current status with them. And then finally, I'll speak to the Dalton Farms Water and Sewer System in basic, and happy to answer questions if that's okay from...
Please.
Great, okay. So we'll then open it up to the community, and I can point to people and ask them...
I'm fine with that.
Do like 10, 20 minutes?
I'm fine with that.
Great, okay, great. So the Duchess County Water and Waste Water Authority is a public benefit corporation that was created by the state in the request of the county. We are a small group of professionals that go into communities and acquire water and sewer systems that can be developer-built, previously developed by municipalities. We typically, we're walking into some situations that are very difficult, where our systems are financially, physically dilapidated and need significant upgrades. And so that's kind of our bread and butter and where we work. The Dalton Farms system, when it came to the Water Authority, was about 20 years old. That was in 2004. We're now about, you know, 20 years later, and to answer one question, there is debt that goes along with both the water and the sewer system that's been levied on the customer's tax bill every year. I can't tell you if it's going to end this year, but we are at the end of that loan. I have to wait another month for the accountants to do their work in building the tax rolls for the year, and then letters will go out, and we'll provide information on that at a later date. And I'm happy to come back at another day to speak to that particular question, but we are coming to the end of the loan for the debt for the existing water and sewer system as it was transferred to the Water Authority. When we talk about the age of, let's finish the first part. The Duchess County Water and Waste Water Authority, we're a small group of professionals. We have a group of project managers, myself included. I'm the asset manager, as well as the deputy director. We have an engineer. Here tonight, I have Gary Banks, who is our project engineer. We also have Mike Keating, who is our executive director and also an engineer. They both have long backgrounds working in the water and sewer industry. Myself, I've been with the Water Authority since 1997, serving in many capacities, as well as installing water lines, replacing water and sewer systems. We have a full set of operators that manage our water and sewer systems. They are staff operators, so we don't have any contract operators at this point. We have full control of our operators, and we're training them and they're licensed to manage these facilities forward. We also have an administrative staff that manages the water and sewer systems bills. You've probably, if you have bills, you've probably called into our office and spoke with various members from our team. We're full administrative staff, handle your calls when it comes to operating concerns. When we think about the systems that the Water Authority has across the entire county, we have 21 water systems and nine sewer systems. These range from a small system that has about 22 customers, up to the Hyde Park Regional Water System, which is several thousand. And Dalton Farms falls in that middle. It is definitely one of the gems in our set of systems that we manage. When we speak to the applicant, the Water Authority does not advocate for this particular project or against it. We are here to answer questions regarding their needs for water and sewer, and the applicant will provide an escrow account, which is basically an amount of money that allows us to evaluate their needs and whether or not it fits with the existing water and wastewater system. The applicant in 2019 provided $3,000, so set the escrow, and in 2021, we completed certain activities to evaluate the capacity of both the water and the sewer system. Through time, it's been determined that there is capacity up to a certain amount. Obviously, this project has changed over time, and so we'll have to continue to evaluate that and make sure that it fits with the project. And the applicant is here tonight to indicate that they will work with the Water Authority and continue that relationship. Any evaluations of the water or sewer system will be developed in technical reports and evaluations that are available through the authority. We are a public entity, and so we are subject to FOIL, which means that requests can be made for the documents, or we can just post them on our website and make them available. When we think about the existing water and wastewater system, they're both 40-plus years old, and they're starting to reach the end of their service life. There are certain components that are maintained through time, and they're replaceable, and operations can do that. There are other components that require a complete replacement. And so when we look at the water system, it's actually in relatively good condition. There are components that, whether it be the five wells that are on site. We have, the smallest well is able to produce 60 gallons per minute. The largest well is 220 gallons per minute. When we do the math on the total amount of flow that we can create, we can generate 374,400 gallons per day, and we have storage of 185,000 gallons. And when we do the evaluation of the storage tank, which is the limiting factor for this particular development, we have about 10,000 gallons left that the developer, the applicant, in theory, could engage with the authority, go through all the evaluation processes, and then lock in that dollars. If another developer comes along and were to access that, that 10,000 gallons could be gone. So it's something that the developer needs to engage with the authority, go through a series of memorandum of understandings, evaluations, and at the end of that process, we will render a decision whether or not they can interconnect with the water and/or the sewer. So the other question that was asked by the chairman, thank you, was the status of the wastewater treatment plant. And this facility is over 40 years old. It has some good components to it, which are concrete. Concrete is something which is a legacy and carries through time. We're able to reuse that where it fits. Excuse me?
Sir, if you could not comment from the audience... Sir, I'm not going to say it again. This will remain respectful, or you'll be removed.
There will be a point at the end where I'll ask for questions, as allowed by the chairman, and they'll set the timeframe on that, and I'm happy to answer those questions at that time. So the wastewater treatment plant is ending, is reaching the end of its lifecycle. And so there are certain concrete components that we'll be able to reuse. We've done that with other redesigns that we've done. In this particular case, what we're experiencing is that the superstructure of the building is aging out. It's an enclosed wastewater treatment plant. If you can imagine, with wastewater, you get a lot of aggressive gases, hydrogen sulfide that eats away at those materials and makes the building reach a point where it's no longer functional. The lighting is starting to fail, which creates a safety issue. The walkways are corroding away. The facility's treatment components, whether it be the sand filter, the UV, the primary clarified, the secondary clarified, the RBCs, they're all reaching end of life. And so what the Water Authority has done, separate from what the applicant is here for, I'm just explaining this to you tonight to let you know about the trajectory that we're on. The wastewater treatment plant is reaching the end of its lifecycle. We are engaging with engineering firms to select one, to do an evaluation of that particular facility, use fund balance that comes out of the budget of the system, to determine how best to move forward with that system. And we will hear complaints that we've had, which include both the odors. All right, you know, always remember, this is a wastewater treatment plant, so there's going to be odors at some point. Can't get away from that. I've built other facilities where we entombed everything with gaskets, and I don't smell it, but I'm in the industry, and to me, it smells like forest floor, but still, some of those odors can get out. In this particular facility, it is aging out, so we need to do a replacement. So this year, we're going to do an evaluation. At the end of that, we'll be able to address the condition of the facility, and then also seek grants and loans that go along with the facility to carry it forward. We're going to submit to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is a funding agency, and they have several grant programs that are available at this moment, both WIA, the bipartisan infrastructure law, and then they also have a revolving fund, where we may be able to access low-interest loans to move that project forward. The need for this is beyond just the condition of the facility. There are certain components that have reached the end of their life, they failed, and they're impacting the permit. So this would be the sand filter and the UV. We have a consent order from the DEC that requires us to act and replace at least those components. Because of the condition of the facility, the way it was designed and then implemented, we need to take action to replace this facility in a way that will carry it forward as a legacy and meet your needs, as well as those that are connected to it. And when we think about the applicant, the wastewater treatment plant has sufficient capacity at this time to meet the needs as it's projected. If they change their design, we would have to reevaluate that. When we, you know, it's complicated. There's a lot to this. As we work through this process, separate from the applicant, we're going to understand the facility, we'll be able to plan forward for how we're going to replace it, we're going to seek grants and loans, and ultimately replace that facility. The understanding is that this work will be, let's get a slight schedule here. The next year will be to create that plan, seek the dollars, the grants and the loans. We'll be on a plan that will be put out by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. They would publish that in November of 2025. We would know whether or not we won those loans and grants. We'd be able to carry forward probably about next summer to start a design. It'd take about a year to do that. It would go out to bid, and then two years beyond that, we would be looking at construction, completion of construction. And, you know, that schedule may change based on the availability of funds or what needs to be done. When we look at the water system, as I said before, it's in relatively good condition. It's probably a B+ when you consider where it's at. Many of the components are ones that the operators can replace, whether it be the filters, we can deal with the wells. We have sufficient supply, and for the current development, we have sufficient capacity in the storage tank. When we look at the applicant, as it's projected, I believe it's 9,900 gallons as projected, that fits within that 10,000. So if the applicant is quick, and they're able to get their application in, work through this process, we can potentially allow them to connect to the system. What does it mean for an applicant to connect to the Dalton Farms water and/or sewer system? They would be responsible for all the costs for their distribution system, and any upgrades that are required to both the water system and the sewer system. This is separate from any, these costs are not going to be borne by the Dalton Farms community, right? So this developer is responsible for all the costs to bring their distribution, their collection system, any improvements to the water plant, any improvements to the sewage treatment plant. We need additional wells. They're responsible for that. The nice part for the community would be, though, if we were to bring in each one of these developments that we've had come in over time, possibly including this applicant, they add to the customer set and allow us to spread the cost of that facility. And so it will help us to offset and avoid some of the costs that you would have in the future. So that wastewater treatment plant that I described, that will have a cost. Ultimately, that will be borne by the customers of the system, the residents, the property owners. And by having this additional system attached, they're responsible for their costs to interconnect, both the water and the sewer, but they would also contribute to our improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and any improvements that might be needed in the future to the water treatment plant. So that kind of concludes where I'm at with what I would tell you. I'm hoping to open it up to questions. I do also have two team members here that can answer questions that I can't. There's probably questions that I can't answer tonight, and that's okay. And I'm willing to come back another day and do that. So if in an orderly manner, if people could raise their hands, I'm happy to answer questions. Gentlemen.
I think you still want to run this.
Oh, actually, hold on, hold on.
Okay. Bear with me, because this is unusual. I just want to make sure I get it right.
I just think, for purposes of the record, they need to be on the mic.
No, okay. So anybody who has a question, please come to the mic so that it can be recorded in the minutes correctly, and you're also being videotaped, so please, this is a very good opportunity to ask your question.
To the secretary, I'm very sorry about, you know, the addition to your minutes, but I thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
So, sir, if you would mind coming up, I'll stand here. You can ask your question. I'll let you ask one question, and I'll move to the next person. We do have quite a few people here. Thank you.
I read one time that the average person uses 75 gallons of water per day, approximately.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt. I just need your name and address, please.
My name is Harold Fetzer, 2496 Route 55.
Thank you.
Is that accurate?
Repeat the question, sir. I mean, you can, if you want.
The sound system in this building is terrible. Maybe if you had some speakers in the back where we could hear better.
Please don't break our sound system anymore, if you could. I think that's about $400.
So I can answer the question?
Please.
Great. And I'll repeat the question. Hold on a moment. So the question was, the, does, what is the typical usage per single person, right? And I think you said 75 gallons per day. I can't speak to that one, but I can tell you that, looking at all the water systems that we have over the 27 years that I've been working in the industry, typically, the average single-family home uses somewhere between, and this is a detached house, so this is a single-family home off by itself, uses about 165 to 250 gallons per day. They're usually on the lower side unless they have a large lawn, and that's where you get into that 250. When we think about attached dwellings, so we'd be thinking about an apartment complex here, we're talking about 100 gallons per day. When I look at the math of what I saw, it's 48 dwellings, and it's 9,900 gallons per day, and we divide those two together, we get about a 206 gallons. So my estimation here is that they're using the DEC standard or some other metric, which is very conservative. And so based on real-world data, I would expect that it's much lower. And so if they're at 9,900, I would expect that their actual real flow on a daily basis would be probably about half that.
You need to approach the mic, sir. Please, approach the mic and state your name and address.
I'm going to hold the mic because I think it's separating, and I, I'll come to you. No, I'm just going to...
Again, Dan Hubert, 23 Osborne Glen. My concern is timing. I understand you said you're hoping to get capital to improve the environment, to include the plants, maybe in 2026, maybe, if it's approved. In the meantime, we're maybe constructing this community. How do you support a group like, an expansion like this, if you haven't even improved the expansion of your utility plant? How do you do the, how do you match the timing of this project with what you have to do at your utility plant? I see a big mismatch. I do. And also, whatever you're planning, if this goes to, is executed, are you, do you have to add pumping stations now in order to support this construction? Because if you don't, you're going to affect our community right here initially, until you do have pumps in the plant.
Thank you so much for your question, questions. So the first question is timing, right? And then I'll get to the pump station part and the second part, which is, I think, a little easier. Timing-wise, what I was trying to describe before, and I was kind of squishing it all together, there's two components to this. There is the existing wastewater treatment plant that's starting to age out, and we recognize that, we know we need to do work there, and so we're focused on the future. And that is independent of what the applicant needs in this particular situation. So when I describe the replacement of the wastewater treatment plant forward to continue to meet the needs of the community and make sure that we've, you know, done that in a responsible manner, trying to seek outside funding and get the lowest loans that we can, lowest-cost loans, that's a separate project. When it comes to the applicant, the current wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant have the capacity for what I've seen today. Now, we need to go through an evaluation process to understand that, the documents will be made publicly available, and it's separate. And so they run on independent paths, and they're separate. So I think that answers your question, the first part. Great, you nodded yes. The second part was, will this require a pump station? Now, whatever this needs, this development, will be borne by the developer, the applicant, and so if it needs a pump station for water, sewer, whatever that is, they're responsible for it, and that cost will be borne by the applicant. And so I can't say whether or not it will. It really depends on elevations, an engineering evaluation, a report would be developed by the applicant. The Water Authority would expect that the applicant would provide escrow funds, those are dollars that they provide to our entity. We use those to then evaluate their report. We may even do our own independent evaluation of that, and we'd make that information available to you. I think that answers your question. You got to come back.
I always assume there's water line or...
No, sir, there's not. The question was, is there a water or sewer main in 55?
Is there a basic water source or water main?
No. No, there's not.
You got a lower level?
Nope, thank you. Thank you very much for your questions. Was there, hi, yes. And I'll look it to the back. Yep. Come on up. I'm going to hold the mic, so you don't need to grab it, but I'm going to, let's make sure you can hear.
Gloria Hadley, Dalton Farm, 38 Thomas Road.
was free, sewer was free. And then you came in and my taxes were assessed for 20 years. The 20 years is up now. And are we going to be responsible for all this new construction and add-ons? And is this just going to be perpetuated on our taxes?
Sure, I can answer that. Thank you for your question. So just to be clear, developers, application, all their costs are theirs, and they will not be borne by the Dalton Farms community. When it comes to the wastewater treatment plant improvement that I've described in some detail here, which would be a complete replacement of the plant from the back to the front, or whatever is described by the process we'll go through to do that design, yes, it will be borne by the Dalton Farms community. It is your wastewater treatment plant, and it is necessary for that to be fully functional and compliant. We have a DEC consent order that requires us to act to do an improvement. We see based on the age that it makes the most sense, that's the best expenditure of dollars to replace the entire facility. We're working on an evaluation now to understand that and seek grant dollars as well as low-interest loans. So we're, we're kind of in that process now where we define that process. I, as well as my project managers, will come out in the future and provide community information to you, probably separate from this planning board. I thank them for their time. And I know this is very unusual.
Please, Jonathan, no, thank you.
But happy to come out in the future and give you progress reports as we go through that. I've worked with many communities, whether it be Stabsburg, Greenfields, Pinebrook, Hyde Park Regional, just various communities and go out and do public information committees meetings. We would come out with posters and presentations and answer any questions until you're done, and obviously wouldn't take the planning board's time.
Now, if I just may ask for clarification myself, Jonathan.
Yes, sir.
When you said Dalton Farms community, now there's the Dalton Farms HOA in development, and then is that the only community that will absorb the upgrade of the plant or all users? And the name of the plant is Dalton Farms?
Sure. Thank you for your question. The Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority in partnership with the, this is going to get kind of technical, but, you know, I hope you follow with me. We partner with the Dutchess County Legislature and the County Executive to create park county sewer districts and zones of assessment to define the water and sewer service areas to help us to apportion the cost with all the, more? Is that good? Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Yes, I'm sorry. I can hear in my own ear that I was starting to get a little further away. It's, you know, like nervous because I'm holding this piece. I don't want it to drop. So we use these legal constructs to create the mechanism so that we can apportion the cost with all the water and sewer customers that are in the system and property owners. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be that you are a user of the system. If you're in the defined area, you may have costs. So there are certain vacant properties that have the potential to be developed. There are open space parcels, there are recreation parcels that may not have service, but they pay some cost toward it. So, let's see. Oh, and then there are other service areas that are included. So when we think about, when I say Dalton Farms water and sewer, they're not actually co-terminous. What does that mean? They're not the same set of customers, both on the water and the sewer side. The water side has an area that was expanded by the town of Beekman to address a water quality concern. So this goes down one road on the side of, to the southeast of the development. And they have just water. They don't actually have sewer. So they would be responsible for their portion of the water treatment plant if we ever did an improvement there. They will not partner with the sewer part. So when I say Dalton Farms water and sewer, I don't actually mean the homeowners association. I mean the service area that is defined by these legal constructs that are created by the legislature in partnership with the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to meet that need. So long answer to, what you consider Dalton Farms may not be what I consider Dalton Farms because there are developments that have been tacked on, that are a part of that community for water and/or sewer, and we all share in the cost of that. So I think I've answered your question.
And better. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So I'm going to, can I go to other people first?
Ma'am, yeah, please. There are others.
Sir, come on up. And then I think there were some in the back. I will get to you. I can't come to you, but I thank you for coming up.
Understood.
Understood. All right, I'm going to hold it to you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. The, you've concluded that it's, it's run out, that it's lived out its life. The system needs repair.
The wastewater treatment plant has reached the end of life.
So question is, well, it seems like, the main question is, I would be uneasy if I was directly affected because you're going to apply, you're applying for grants in low interest loans. This is tentative. You might not get the grants. You're applying for the money. They need the money now. I mean, they need the assurance that this is going to get fixed. This is a serious matter. And you're putting, you're doing evaluations when you know it's already, it's had it. And you're still doing evaluations and you're, you don't even know where the, if you're going to get the money. That's my question. This is, isn't there some way of giving them solid reassurance? I mean, I would be nervous. You know, what if the grants don't come in?
I'm just waiting for you to finish your question.
I'd still be nervous.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your question. Thank you for coming up. Make sure, okay, I'm good again. Great. So when we think about the process, you wouldn't want to replace something before it has reached the end of its life. You wouldn't want to do it before you have a situation, a scenario where you have the ability to access grants and loans. When we think about the point that we're at with the Dalton Farms wastewater treatment plant, we are applying to the New York State Environmental Standards Corporation. They have a scoring method. This is kind of like a game, a Lotto, if you will. Yes, there is an opportunity that we may not get the grant or the loan. We're competing against every other project in New York State for the funds that are out there. And that's kind of scary. But I've done this for the last 27 years or so, and more in the last 10, and very focused on this particular issue. By having a consent order, we get points and we move up the list. We are in a very good position, I think, with Dalton Farms to access those grants. When we think about the moment that we're with, is that good? Sorry, I was starting to slip. When we think about where we are at this moment with dollars that are coming from the federal government, there are certain loans that, not loans, grant programs that are being pushed to the states. New York State has its own WIA grant program, which has been well utilized by the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to fund these kinds of projects. There's also a WQIP grant that the state has put out that we are starting to access for many projects and try to defray some of the costs. Federal government has done a bipartisan infrastructure law. It's called the bill for short, but it includes a, the largest investment in water and sewer in the history of the U.S. And you can look that up. It's, we've actually accessed considerable grants for projects across our area. And my hope is that by acting now, at this moment, we have the points to score well. This is the moment where there's a considerable amount of grant dollars out there. The state is well positioned to support through several different grants. I can't guarantee you won't get any of them, but we have done this before. And the Water Authority, over the course of the work that we've done over the last 20 some odd years, has accessed over $80 million in grants and gotten low-interest loans for almost all of our projects where it's possible. So my guarantee to you is I'm going to do everything I can to try and get the best loan grant package we can. Can't guarantee we're going to get something, but we're going to put our best foot forward. So we're here for you, we're working with you on that piece, and thank you for your question. I need to go in the back over here.
Can you move that?
Oh, okay. Yes, sir. Come on up. Thank you. We will get to everyone as long as the board is.
If it's okay, this will be the last speaker. We have quite a few other items on our agenda tonight. Unless somebody has an urgent question that hasn't been answered yet. All right? That's the caveat.
All right. Jerry Frey, 128 Indian Pass. It's more, I guess, food for thought as far as if you're getting grants, capital, loans, whatever the case is, to replace the plant, sewer, water, upgrade the system for the future potential service of the town, especially town center zoning. Possibly, I think it would be a good idea to consider upsizing or whatever the service requirement engineered out for coming down Bischoff and providing a stubout for the future use of the area coming through 55. I don't know if the rest of the Thai going up and through Dalton Farms will support it, but, you know, dig one trench and size of the pipes really not.
Thank you for that comment. I don't have an answer for you tonight. No, thank you.
And there's one more question.
We want that.
Yes. Two more?
Can I, can I offer also, happy to answer as many questions as you want, but I would say I welcome written comments and so the board, and then I would respond to them.
Okay, great. All right. Three more quick questions. This gentleman, then the lady, and then, if you could line up, please. And only these three, and then we'll need to move on. As the gentleman said, he will accept written questions for, for you. Thank you.
I thank the board for their consideration. Thank you.
James Mahoney, 127 Roosevelt Drive. Thank you for being here. It's been very informative. But you paint not such a great picture of Dalton Farm water system. I know for a fact the holding tank on top of Roosevelt Drive needs to be replaced because it's constantly leaking, which you guys probably know. So there's a lot of investment that's needed. So question really, in your professional opinion, doesn't it make sense to plug in a 48-unit condominium complex into this infrastructure? Or common sense would dictate, you would fix the infrastructure, make it better, make it in such a way that it can, it can accommodate this. So that's my question to you and your professional opinion.
Thank you for your question. So when it comes to the wastewater treatment plant, separate questions. You know, the applicant, we have sufficient capacity now. We're not talking about the collection system. That's, oh, sorry. I got a little further away, didn't I? The collection system evaluation has been done in the past, and I'm sure that that'll be a part of the evaluation that we do forward. It is separate. So the application here will be addressed, and improvements to the wastewater treatment plant will be in the future. When it comes to the storage tank, it's inspected annually, and I haven't read the most recent inspection. You know, everything is 45 years old plus, so, you know, it may have different issues at times, but our uptime and readiness to serve the community is very good. You know, obviously, we see us in our moments of stress, whether it be a fire event or if there are pressure-reducing valves that may need to be managed through time. It's a water system. You know, it requires maintenance. We are there to do that. So the applicant stands alone. They'll have to provide their engineering report. We'll evaluate it and we'll carry that forward. When it comes to the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, that is a separate issue. We'll go here. Hi. Name and address.
Mary Ann Russo, 56 Vanderburg Road. Hi. I appreciate that you say that you'll apply for grants and loans to help defray our costs. If there's anything we can do, anybody we can, we can tell our legislators that we would like them to grant this to help us out.
Thank you for your question. Yes, very good question. When it comes to the going before the New York State Environmental Standards Corporation, it is a program. And they've got scoring, and they've got applications, and it's pretty straightforward. Letters from the community are always helpful. Letters from the community are always helpful, and we're thankful for them. So if you could write, you know, as we work through the process, if you do review it and you feel you want to give a letter of recommendation, we'd appreciate that. Reaching out to your legislators is always helpful because when you look at the federal dollars, whether it be the bill, bipartisan infrastructure law, or if we're talking about asks at the federal level, that would be separate from what we're talking about here. Yes, having our local electeds, as well as whether it be town, county, state, that is very helpful for trying to access those other special dollars. So we will, we'll be out, and I, as I said during my presentation, happy to come out and speak to the community through the stages of this process and provide updates on, you know, where we're going, what we think we need to do, and what the costs are. Thank you. Hi.
Jennifer, 34 Tippett Way. My question is, what is the volume in the aquifer that's below the ground? And do you monitor the below-ground levels of water before you bring it up and process it? Was one question. And the other question is, as a Dalton Farm resident, my water pressure is probably on the lowest end that it can be legally to pour water in a house and still be certified. Is there anything that can be done to improve the water pressure in these units?
Sure. Thank you for your questions. First, Gary, can you write down her address, phone number, and name? That way we can have operations reach out to her. Great. When it comes to pressure in the water system, 20 PSI is the minimum, although we look to achieve a much higher pressure. Okay, understood. So I think the first part is to have the operators come out and look at that. What we do often find is in water systems where people have, say, water softeners or any other filters on the system, those may impact pressure inside the home. And so that's a part of the, you know, what's going on here, and we can take a look at that. We wouldn't touch your internal plumbing, but we may ask questions that may help you to understand the problem. If we can look at the pressure in the street and maybe at an outside spigot, that would also help us to understand the pressure. So Gary, we'll take your information and we'll carry forward from there. Your first question was?
The aquifer.
Oh, yes, the aquifer. Yep.
You said that.
I can answer that. Thank you for that question. Yes. So the aquifer, if you can imagine, it's underneath us. It's hard to evaluate. And so a hydrogeologist would go through an evaluation using wells to determine what's going on with it. And so we have five wells, and we are monitoring the depth to the water. We monitor the rate at which the water's pulled out. We monitor how the well pumps are operating so that we can then understand how we are impacting the aquifer and whether or not we have sustainable supply. At this point, my understanding is, we have a very good supply of water through these five wells and more than enough water to meet the community's needs. Thank you. So I'm going to conclude. I think for those that have stayed, I know that water and sewer is a very important and passionate topic for this community and happy to answer questions going forward. I thank the board for their time and allowing for this unique scenario. And I would say my commitment to you is that as we work through these different projects, I, as well as my team, will come out and meet with the community, hopefully using the town space, but outside of your meeting.
I would just like to thank you, Jonathan, and Mike, and Gary. So the public knows, I have no authority over this agency at all. And they came here of their own free will and volition, and I would like to thank you very much for the information.
Thank you.
So I'd like to request a brief recess for a moment that I need. Can I have a motion for a brief?
I'll make a motion to recess for five minutes.
Yes. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
And AV, if you could attend to the mic, please. Thank you.
You know.
Just so you know, the public hearing is still open, and the engineer will be answering questions that the public has asked. The board will be discussing some of the issues. If you're not going to stay, you have access to what we discuss by video or the minutes, okay? But we are going to continue the conversation in the public hearing after the recess.
My question to you is, now, this may, this may sound stupid, but I just developed an opening on the CAC. I heard you mention something about your wife. So I'm talking out of my ass because I don't know what I'm talking about. But you sounded like she is kind of pretty knowledgeable of the things like you are and maybe I am.
She's even better. She's the A-team. I'm the B-team.
Is that right?
Yeah. She knows more about this stuff than me.
What does she do? She works for, does she work?
She does exactly the same. I'm, she's a landscape architect.
Oh, she is.
She works for Westchester County like I do. She designs parks and stuff, but she really, she's involved in a lot of environmental issues. She's involved with that RE/MAX. Have you heard of them? The Hudson River Estuary thing.
Yeah, I've heard of them.
Yeah. They go up and they talk about the health of the Hudson River. They have DC members on there and talk about their plants, you know. But, you know, she's, she's super into like environmental.
Flower mine question. You think she'd be interested to be on?
I'm looking for somebody that, see, I'm pretty cheesy. Maybe somebody that knows
stuff like that. And I tell you, I'm working down, I'm not going to do it forever. Look at somebody that gets some salary that can do this. Why don't you take the damn thing over?
Yeah. I think, what Brian said earlier is, we could probably adjourn it to the next meeting, so. Probably be time next meeting, yeah. He talks a little fast, and I have to try to keep up with it, but mostly, yeah. Mostly, yeah. Yeah.
Go ask her. Hey, go ask her. Don't be bashful. You know, somebody.
Let me talk to her.
Talk to her for an evening, once a month? Well, once a month, on Mondays.
Mondays.
Monday, it's like here, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And usually, don't go very late. And...
How many members do you have now?
Well, I'm authorized to have nine, including me. Because I just saw off one, so I'm moving down one person. I got a good bunch of John's on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have those who get, and we're going to answer some questions.
I had to get her. I'm interested.
Well, I can say what.
Now, look it over, put the board in, and talk to somebody. But I'm looking for somebody. I'm always alert when I hear somebody. You mentioned she was good, so I said, I'm going to ask them anyway. And gave her any word, saying, no. Tell her she is a good group of people. They're all good, but the guys, you know, like John, a couple ladies. No, it's a good mix, and we don't, we all get along. Except me, I'm a big prick.
You run it.
Yeah.
You don't have to get along.
That's right.
What you say goes.
Good luck.
I'll ask her. Let me talk to her. She would be an asset, totally.
It sounds like you're saying.
But it's just if she has the time, you know, and...
Well, yeah, but there isn't a lot of time outside of that. Just the one they want. If they don't want to. If she wants to get involved or something, there's stuff to do.
As much as you give, yeah.
Yeah, because I got people, they all work, or have families, so, you know, they're at the, so I act accordingly. You know how much I can ask for some people? I can ask more for others. I put a lot of time in, but I'm retired, but I'm getting tired. But anyway.
It's great that you...
Yeah.
We've done such a great job running it for so many years.
Yeah. Why do you think of that 500 acres thing?
Which one?
New York State Park. I don't, I haven't advertised it. I think it's not the Brooklyn Court. I'm watching what the organization, Land for the Parks. They get land.
Okay, if...
And we actually took a long time. About 500 acres. They just made it to New York State Park.
Oh, I didn't...
I'll write that down, and we'll get an answer for you tonight.
In town, those don't advertise. That's what they asked John. That's what John said, and Bill Crane, he knows about it. That would run it out. They have a big living credit service, or they ask Tuesday, over in, it's on Friday tomorrow.
Well, that's really the answer.
Buy one, pick a case that I study.
If the best way to, you know, to keep this place moral and not add to the tax, is to buy up some of these properties, put anti up, and buy these properties.
Well, it took a while.
Thank you.
But they got, oh, I'm sorry, I do.
All right, if I could ask the board to return?
I didn't take your seat.
Oops, not yet.
I just moved mine over. That's all. Well, no, I did take your seat.
No, you're good.
I did, didn't I? No, I did.
Yeah, that's right. You're right. No, you took mine. You just slide over.
I did, no, I didn't.
Just slide over. Okay. Yeah, good.
It's good to get off the next year. It's better, I do. Oh, boy. It's gonna be a long night here.
Oh, we're moving along now. Oh, God.
You know, you probably know, I got an opening in my CAC.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
How to find somebody?
I'm just talking to him, because my wife's a very much...
Oh, good.
I always come here. I'll tell you why. You know, I'll give you my number.
Okay. If I could ask for a motion to...
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to resume this meeting.
Can I have a second to resume the meeting?
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Brian, thank you. So were you making notes, Brian, about some of the items?
Seven.
Seven? Okay. I have a list, and I know that Rob does. We'll go through our list as you speak.
I mean, I think we heard the majority of it. It's water sewer. There's analysis has to be done on our end. We've got two separate issues. We have an aging system, and we have us tying into it. Obviously, we can't impact the system. We're responsible for any improvements on our end to tie into that system and analysis. They're independent of each other. We know that, and we've spoke to the board about that. And I think it was good that Dutchess County Water and Wastewater was here to clearly identify that they are separate, and we have to fund analysis and review on our own as the applicant. Other than that, comments on the location, density, it's something we've worked through with the board before. We're following the town code concept. I understand density-related issues and character issues, but I think this was the, our response is going to be that we speak to the master plan. I think that was a majority of the comments. We have stormwater, we have New York State DOT. Again, we're in the beginning stages of this process, so we're not seeking to gain approvals right now. This is just information gathering and responding. So with that, you know, we want to adjourn this to the October meeting, because from a submission standpoint, you'd have to respond within a week or a week and a half, and to do that comprehensively would be difficult, because we want to include interaction with Dutchess County Water and wastewater, and include that as part of the record. So, you know, with that, I think our comments are aligned with yours. If you want to go through your hit list, you know, we could do that right now.
Okay. So, Robert, please, you go first.
I guess the best way is, like, I'll bring up some comments, and maybe you can answer. That, I heard the community mention. The, one of the persons was asking, you know, what's the problem we're trying to fix with this development? I can practically answer that. There's, it's not necessarily a problem. People have a right to develop their property as long as they do it safe and within the confines of our laws. But the, there is a problem with, there's not enough apartments. There's definitely been demonstrated that there's not enough affordable housing. I hate to use that word, because it's not meaning that we're low-income houses, just not enough apartments for people, for our young folks who graduate and want to move out of the house. So if we were to point to any kind of problem, there is that problem, and this is a development that's for apartments. Who's responsible for sidewalks? Do we have a law in our community, Dan, that you're required to maintain the sidewalk in front of your house?
Yes, particularly in the town center district. All of the owners are required to maintain the sidewalks.
So that's not going to be on you guys. That's the owner of this community is going to be responsible for their sidewalks. As far as these environmental impact studies, there may be some confusion that studies were done 15 years ago, and we're relying on that. Confirm that we're, all the studies, the work that you're doing for this community is recent studies, right?
Recent studies. Like, for example, New York State DOT, we're working on the collierys engineering. They just performed a traffic study. We're working with DOT. So just so the public knows, the DOT is responsible for the entrance, the lane improvement, and it's based upon capacity. It takes into account future development of town center. It's not just this project as it relates to Route 55. It's entire development, full build-out condition of Route 55. So those things are taken into account, and they're also reviewed by DOT and approved by DOT. So that's under review. There are a number of comments they brought up. They're working through their traffic programs, and we'll continue to update the board with the outcome of that interaction with DOT.
So, thank you, Brian, for that. And regarding stormwater, there were a lot of questions from neighbors close by that have issues with this property. And so, you know, I want you guys, or the board wants you guys to know, that we're concerned with that. We don't want this development to make a bad situation worse, and if there's ways we can improve it, that we want to make sure that happens as part of this process. So at the last meeting, it was brought to our attention that there's possibly stormwater runoff that's affecting the neighbors next door. And we, I had asked Brian at the last meeting, you're proposing a stormwater detention basin, whatever you want to call it, but it's, are we making sure that that detention basin and the drainage that's being generated on-site as part of this project, that it's being contained within the project site and not going to affect the neighbors?
Right. So what was done 20 years ago in the 1980s, 1970s is vastly different than how stormwaters are dealt with today. There's the extensive New York State DEC design manual that we have to follow. It's reviewed by the town engineer, and it goes through the DEC process. There's a series of inspections that happens after the report is approved, and we move toward construction. There's inspections by our office, there's inspections by the town engineer. So the way things were done, you know, 20, 30 years ago are vastly different than the way they're done now, to ensure that they are followed, the design is followed, the construction methods are followed. It's not just on paper, but it actually happens in the field. So as I mentioned, as part of that DOT improvement for the lane, I suspect that there could be some kind of drainage improvement along that corridor to help some of the downstream neighbors. I don't know what that improvement is right now, because again, we're in the beginning process, but it has been identified. We are going to address it, and it will be, you know, part of our resubmission package.
As far as I can tell, a lot of questions were answered with the water department fellow, and, you know, and, but it's not over. We're going to likely adjourn this public hearing till October, so there'll still be more opportunity for a comment. I just want to say, I really appreciate all the comments that the public made tonight. They were very smart, intelligent comments. I want the public to know that we share your concerns. We're part of the community. If you look back at our past meetings, you'll see, and John alluded to this earlier, when the applicant came in with the original project proposal, it was nearly double the units, and it would have required a lot of variances. And we asked all the same questions you guys were answering. Is this too much density in our town? Is, what's this going to do to traffic? What's this going to do to water and sewer system? These were all the questions we were asking. As a result of our drilling the applicant on these issues, and they're working with the Department of the Water, they've now come back with a much reduced application. Now, I, you know, you can argue if that's still too much for you or whatever, but we just want you to know that we've been asking a lot of the same questions, and we will continue to hold the applicant accountable and the professionals who do these studies accountable, to make sure that they're minimizing any impacts to the local residents, the neighboring residents, and the neighboring community. And, but thanks, Brian, for answering the questions, and thanks to the water department person for coming.
Thank you, Robert. Brian, I have a couple. So one of the residents asked about light pollution. If you could answer.
Yeah, perfect, perfect question. So the town code, and a lot of the towns around here, again, we go back to design methods that were done in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, where lighting pollution really wasn't taken into account. You know, with current code, it's full downcast lighting, so as you look at a light fixture, you don't see a light bulb, you see a fixture itself, but you don't actually see the lens below it. So as you're looking at the site, all light is pointed downward. Also, they're fully shielded from neighboring properties, so from residential properties, we'll make sure that those lights are shielded. There's actually an analysis that we do as part of our plan set that is on file that actually details each individual light pole, that details an individual fixture, fixture height, and from that, you can actually develop lighting schematics that show the intensities of those, of those each individual poles. So we're not going to light this up like it's a baked ATM. It's going to be lit to the minimum standards. The town has a minimum standard. It's usually half a foot candle in a parking lot, so you're going to have a low-light situation within the parking areas of the buildings. The building lighting will be shielded. As far as lighting along the streetscape, downcast lighting, to be sensitive to neighbors, and again, that'll be part of the analysis, part of review by the town engineer, and sure we meet that code.
And if I may say, Brian, I'm in favor and would appreciate as many Ballard lights where appropriate, as opposed to the tall lamp posts. Another comment was litter. So we talked about garbage receptacles and coverings that would match the architecture of the building. Will you have outdoor garbage containers? By the recreation area and other appropriate areas?
Right. There'll be trash receptacles for that area. The project will be owned by a development agency, an entity, so they'll be responsible. There'll be a set of restrictions that'll be put in place as far as maintenance, mowing of lawn, trimming of trees, and things like that, to ensure not only is litter picked up, but landscaping is maintained to the approved level on the approved plan, so that in, let's say, 10 years, a tree dies, that there is a provision or a mechanism that that tree gets replaced, will be an approved plan on file. So there is a set of belt and suspenders on a site plan like this, specifically when you have an agency that does own it, that is responsible for maintaining. And if they're not, then that's a building permit issue that's enforceable through violation.
You know, to my surprise, people have no problem throwing garbage on the ground. So I'd like to request trash receptacles at appropriate locations, public areas, well, all right, and other appropriate areas. We can talk about, you can show where you feel they're appropriate on the plans, and we can discuss that later. Another question about the recreational area. Is that going to be open to the residents of Beekman or exclusively for the use of the tenants?
So when we were discussing with the planning board, the area would be exclusive to the development itself, because the development itself would be maintaining those facilities. Public does, at some point in time, the road will be dedicated, the main road, the town road, will be dedicated to the town. So it'll be built to town specifications, it'll be maintained by the developer until such time that it's dedicated, and you'll have to meet a bunch of inspections, as we do with subdivision roads, to ensure that it was built appropriately. So in that respect, there is public access eventually through that site, because it'll be part of the town center, but specific to the recreational facilities, the intent is to be specific to the developer.
Thank you. Have any tax abatements been negotiated?
No.
No. Okay. If you could just say that louder.
No.
Into the mic. Thank you. Will the, will the complex be landlord-occupied, or will the owner, is he going to be in the area or near the development?
Again, we're at step two of 10, so they are apartments, so they will be rentals. The owner currently is a business owner of the community, so right at the beginning, he is going to be owning it and lives locally within the town.
Thank you. Okay. I, I'm just going to, I'm going to mention it, and I'm not sure if this is part of our process, but the impact to schools, I personally don't know. I've never been asked that here, so I'm not sure how I can address that, or if you could, but I'll leave that to you.
I'll provide documentation specific to that, as far as how projections are for current schools in Arlington, and, you know, what they have now and what they predict, whether it's a plus or minus. I'll just, rather than speculate, I'll give you documentation.
Thank you. And those are the questions that I've noted.
I have one other quick question.
Thank you.
The, can you consider, especially for the stormwater pond area, some type of meadow mix that has pollinator species in it?
Yep.
And you're going to have to do some kind of, as a way of mitigating the loss of pollinator, you know, the meadows that are on the site now, so.
Yeah, we'll coordinate that, make sure it aligns with DEC. Yeah, we'll coordinate that, make sure it aligns with DEC regulations, so if it is possible, we'll coordinate.
Okay. I'm good.
I'm good.
You're good, Ms. Corino?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Schork?
Nope.
Nothing for you, sir?
No.
Dan?
Yeah, actually, with that next submittal, let's get that environmental assessment form updated and supporting studies for how those questions are answered and all that so we can continue to take a hard look at that as a board. I think I'd also mention, it's my understanding, school enrollment's been declining quite heavily over the last few years.
I didn't want to say it, but I like to.
That's, that's my understanding of the situation.
I didn't want to say it, but I'd rather get your documentation to make sure I speak.
People are having less kids, I think.
Right.
And more aging as a community, so it's less younger.
Could be, could be part of it, too, yeah.
And there are issues with intellectual deserts, too, without places for our children to stay in starch families. Smaller towns are experiencing an exodus of, well, our legacy. So any other comments?
I think we could maybe move to adjourn the meeting to the October meeting and then move on with our agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to October?
Seventeen.
Seventeenth, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And I'd like to thank the public for coming out tonight. Okay, next on the agenda is Town Center Grove.
All right, Town Center Grove, this is located on Town Center Boulevard. We're a couple of properties up from the, the public library at the corner of Town Center Boulevard and Clove Valley. A new building that was recently put up, so we're the next property going south toward the ball fields. We're on the western side of Town Center Boulevard. What we're proposing is a single four-unit, two-bedroom apartment permitted by Town Center zoning. It'll be supported by individual well and septic system on site. This project has a little bit of history to it. It was originally a two-lot subdivision that went through the process with the planning board. It got to a certain point and looking at how the site is developed and working through all the agencies that are involved, we took the project over and we fine tuned it to ensure that we meet all regulations with all entities that touch the project. So originally, this was two units, this is two lots subdivision, but working through the environmental aspects of it, this lot can only support with, with individual well and septic, just one building with four units. In doing so, we have the building following the previous application and the Town Center concept. It's pushing the building forward with parking in the back. Will be a small parking lot in the back, will be access to a standard commercial entrance. We show sidewalks along Town Center Boulevard that will be connected to the newly developed site to the north.
Brian, bear with us just one minute so we can get it queued up on the screen if possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you, if you can see here, the, the building is showing up front, parking in the back, we have landscaping throughout. The stormwater regulations are different on this. As the projects grow in size, the stormwater regulations change, so we're under an acre disturbance here, so we're not looking at the same rules that apply to this project. It is vastly smaller, vastly less impervious. Preliminary soil testing has been done with the Board of Health to ensure that we can make the septic system work on site. Septic system is shown toward the back. The intent is to keep this site vegetated as, to the best of ability as possible. We want to, you know, save the trees on, on site and be sensitive to our neighbors around us, so we've limited the disturbance to under an acre. We have a rendering here of the building, the blues, the intent is to be blue here, but the color printer exaggerated them slightly. But the intention is, is to, you know, fit Town Center, you know, with, with architectural features that have bump outs in them to show a little bit of relief, you know, in that structure. Other than that, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a small apartment building, again, four units, two bedrooms each. I can't think of anything else. I know we've been through the board a couple of iterations on this and I think we're at the point where the board wanted to open up to the public and just get some input on it.
Okay. Dan, would you like to comment?
Yeah, no, we, we basically have a letter out there from July and, and I, you know, the, the board was comfortable going into a public hearing at this point to start gaining some of those questions, but they, they've refined the plan quite a bit, gotten a lot more detail recently, the architectural, so it's definitely ripe for the board to be moving on this.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So for the record, as, as I always like to try to do, the planning department has reviewed the mailings and the legal ad and I've found them to be in order.
Thank you. Please, anyone who would like to approach the podium? Please. Please, yes. Same rules apply, your name and your address.
Gloria Hadley, 38 Thomas Road, McQuaid. I just want to know, what are the approximate rents of these apartments?
Okay.
Do you know at this time?
We will, at the conclusion of the questions, we'll have the engineer re-approach the podium and he'll, he'll, he'll answer your question there.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Did you have any more questions, ma'am? Please, I'm writing them down if you would like, and if you have any more questions, you can do that now. Nope? Okay. Sure. Ma'am? Thank you.
Gina Regusa, 23 Fairhaven Court. Where, where is this exactly? Behind the library? I'm trying to figure out where.
Across from the fields.
What?
Across from the baseball.
Across from the library, across from the library next to Sparrow's Nest.
Next, right next to Sparrow's Nest.
Is it right next to?
I think there's a lot between it, isn't it?
No, this one's right next to it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And when we're asking, I'm sorry, I'm not sure about this, when we get to this point, is it too late? Is it already approved at all?
No.
Nope.
Okay, so the hearing will be, will be notified at the next hearing again?
This is, this is your opportunity to speak. This is the hearing we're having on the project.
This is it?
This is it.
Nobody really knew.
Sometimes we adjourn the hearing to another month if we feel it's necessary, but this is, we notify you now, this is, we haven't, we have enough information on the drawings that we invite the public to make comments now before it gets too far along and we can't make.
I just think we're closing this little area off with too many apartments now. It's crazy. I, I don't think anybody that was here realized that this was coming up, what they left. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So you understand there, there is a radius of notification?
Two hundred fifty feet, right?
Right.
That's my backyard. Like, I mean, most of us have an acre, that's not that big, you know? I mean, I know those are the town rules, but it's not very big, that should be two miles.
There's also legal notices in the paper. If you want to, you know, just every month, look, what, 10 days before our meeting, which is the third, third Thursday?
Yes.
Look at the legal notices and they'll be in there.
And the town website also.
And the Poughkeepsie Journal.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else?
And you can also submit in writing concerns and questions.
Okay.
Yes, to, to the, the email is.
Planning Secretary. At Town of Beekman. Is this the same owner?
Uh, same, 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 same architect.
Same architect, yes.
Yes. Right. Different owner.
Same engineer.
Same engineer, sorry.
Engineer, different.
Yes.
We don't want to violate state education.
I don't, I don't want a black eye.
Requirements.
Good call, good call.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak about Town Grove? Town Center Grove project? Okay. Okay. Dan? Anything more?
Close the public hearing?
Any actions for this evening?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I, I don't see any reason to necessarily keep the public hearing open at this point.
So all comments have been answered to your satisfaction?
Yeah, he's, they've, they've worked well with trying to address the comments to date, yes.
Okay. So. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda, oh, sorry, please.
So I, I guess I would, I would just mention, we'll need to work on a determination for environmental, so we can, we can take the environmental assessment form that Brian's office has put together and we can provide responses to part two and three for the board's consideration at the next meeting if you want me to look into that.
Please, thank you.
Okay.
Did we already make a SEACER determination? We've done that already?
No.
We have not. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Pellegrino Lot Line.
Thank you. Very warm.
And for the public to know, this is on the agenda for discussion and is not a public hearing, so there will no, there will be no comments allowed from the public regarding this app, this item or any other item for the rest of the evening. Okay. Thank you.
So I've never been in one, so forgive me, I really don't know how this goes. Just as a background, essentially, we're looking to just move a lot line where I currently live. Jalen was this year we bought the vacant lot next to ours. The idea was to not have the envelope to secure our privacy. And we'll find out that it's not really trying to be reliable for us, unfortunately. So as a compromise, we can secure a little bit more land to our lot and sell the vacant lot for somebody to come. As I understand it, it's all under the subdivision, because even though we're, yeah, I didn't quite think of it as a subdivision, but I understand that that's a procedure and everything like that, so I thought it was a simple thing. I did receive, Dan, thank you for your comments, very thorough view. I was able to look at that. I do, just sort of in general, we, so there was a board of tenants who voted for the ideal, though, by somebody else we recently removed, thinking that that being part of the land to sell, you know, helped you maybe get a little bit more money for it. So our charter would include that on our plans. We don't intend to do any building we want. I mean, you know, I work full-time, I'm a developer, you know, I've got a two-year-old at home and a baby on the way, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know if that, we still need to go through all the same procedures, even though we don't intend on actually doing this development or how that works.
Yes, so, so in general, what we do is, particularly when you're taking land away from a vacant lot, is we want to see how it can be physically and feasibly developed so that we're not creating a lot that will not be able to be developed in the future. So we have a number of rules and regulations, obviously, some are steep slopes, some are wetlands, so those are all really outlined in the letter as you, as you mentioned. So in order for the board to really evaluate the, the merit of taking away land from this vacant parcel, they need to make sure that they can get a, safely get a driveway in here, that it doesn't disturb too many steep slopes, wetlands, things like that. We appreciate the, the fact that there's a, an approved septic location, so I just basically just ask for a copy of that letter, you know, so they, but, but that's, that is the process, unfortunately, sorry to say.
So we, so we could, and forgive my ignorance, we could sell it as of now with the Board Health approval without issue, but let him in the lot line 100 feet. We got to check for wetlands, do the tree surveys, pogs, we'd talk to the Board Health approval.
Right, and, and so if, if that person comes in and they try to put a driveway down through that area where our NRI maps show that there's steep slopes, they're subject to come to this board for a steep slopes permit as well, even for that lot, too. So it's, you know, to, to make it more, I don't know, saleable maybe, it might behoove you to do that now as part of this process and then you get more of the land onto your lot and you have a little more comfort with your lot. So it's, it's really up to you to, to make that decision.
Right, so I guess my question is, what then? I want to do very well get this off, off my hands, you know, it's, we can't afford it. So one of your items was steep slopes, we have to provide, well, I guess this was not part of, there's a deception of comments you had that we need for sketch approval and then others who don't, so what is the bare minimum that I have to do? Is it everything in your level?
It is. It's, that's just basically I use the code as a checklist, so those are, those are code requirements.
Right.
You, you can ask for waivers, there's a process through our, through our code, and I, I believe I may have mentioned the.
Yeah, I mentioned that.
The section of the code, I don't have it off the top of my head right now, but.
No, I'm familiar with the section I saw, I just mentioned, you recommended that the trees in particular, I mean, we don't really, like, I don't know what trees are going to be disturbed because I'm not going to be the one really. So how would you recommend I go about that?
Right, and, and that's part of showing the feasibility of it, so when, when you would, when you would draw out the driveway that's shown on there and the house that's shown on there, you know, we'd need to see how that would be graded, so you need to have the existing contours there.
Those are shown.
Then proposed contours, and then we could determine what the limits of disturbance are and how that's, you know, if it's meeting our code for driveway grades, if it's meeting our code for disturbance to steep slopes, all those things, so.
I do have, I mean, I have this marked up, I don't know if this is the appropriate form to kind of go through, or is it something I can connect with you?
I'd, I'd be happy to, to meet with you, yeah, absolutely.
Just to, just to make sure that I'm doing everything appropriately. Other than that, I suppose that's, oh, you had recommended that we would conclude the SEACER review, you consider it's type two?
Yeah, so a simple lot line realignment or.
Right.
Within the part six 17 of environmental conservation law dictate that that can be a type two action in accordance with SEACER, so we could, we could have the board.
At least accomplish that this evening?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I don't, I don't have any.
It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
Compared to what we just marked there, so.
You could, you could contact Alitha and Dan is usually in the office on Thursdays.
I mean, I'll, I'll just state that it's in your interest when you sell this lot that it's, there's no issues with it, like for, for the potential, the potential buyers. One could potentially move their lot line and, and it'll only contain all the difficult parts of the entire parcel and, and it's undevelopable. And you can create basically an undevelopable lot by shifting your lot line. And, and that wouldn't serve you well because you go to sell that and then they come to the board with an idea that they think. And, and that wouldn't serve you well, because you go to sell that and then they come to the board with an idea that they think they can build a house, and, and, and it's, and we're, our hands are tied, it's undevelopable. So we're trying to prevent that from happening. We're, we're trying to prevent, we want, it, it's really mutually beneficial for the town and for you to just make sure that you have a buildable lot. And I know it's tough, it's not easy.
I always have a big question, the board health approval, would that stand for approval, you know, whether it's.
Right, and the way it's currently configured, the board of health said that lot's fine the way it's configured.
Sure.
Once you adjust it, it's dependent upon the area of the lot and where that septic is, and maybe that septic was closer to where you're regaining in your new lot. And so if you're moving or changing the potential septic.
I understand that concept, that just the lower rest of things to do doesn't seem to really match up with just taking a look at it, making sure, okay, is the septic far enough along the line? Okay, is everything far enough along the line?
Yeah.
Something built on the portion that we're taking away, so.
Yeah.
It may appear to be more overwhelming than it really is, I suggest you just.
More overwhelming.
More overwhelming than it actually is, yeah.
Detail, no, I'm a biologist, the wetland contamination, I do some of this stuff at work, so.
I see.
I'm familiar, it's quite an undertaking for something that we want to put on the market already, so.
Right, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the new baby.
Yes.
Did the board want to deem the action type two tonight, or does it want to see how, if the applicant wants to continue, or?
Are you looking for us to take any action tonight?
If we could at least confirm that it's, you consider it type two and you don't need to go through the seeker review, is that, is that just an?
I will make a motion to deem this as a type two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One item off the list. You're welcome. You, please, yeah, if you'd like, yeah, you need to get some rest.
Yeah, let that baby sleep now.
Okay. The next item on the agenda for discussion is Green Hill Farm Holdings.
You can get started if you'd like.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ernie Martin, I'm the project engineer for Green Hill Farm Holdings. What we have is a common parcel located at, certainly, we have two separate two roads and a conne road. And it's the intent of the apple pen to perform a severance on something. If you look at the map, you'll notice that there's a main house, somewhat encumbered property, and the house close to the road. The intention of this application, that the, that the lot, that the main house would be on the large parcel, what kind of state of lot, so to speak, the house in front would be on its own separate lot, and then we would have five additional new lots that are front on each road. The zoning here is R forty-five, or if I have to circle the lot, all the parcels that we're proposing exceed that forty-five thousand. We have done soil testing for the proposed septic systems. The soils, with the exception of lot number two, the soils actually were very good. We have a, a, a lomi layer, and then below that we have a gravel layer, we've done circulation tests, so we are quite confident the soils. Lot two, the soils were a little heavier, more clay type, clay loam type.
This whole thing is lying to.
No likelihood that, that's going to be the infrastructure system. An incidentally, lot two, maybe not exactly this configuration, but this property was stepped out of it some years in the past, and that lot as it exists there, almost, not quite the configuration, was part of a previous subdivision. For some reason, the owner took that lot and then emerged it back into the old old parcel. So the, the fly lot, so to speak, and you see, the lot number two was a, in almost that configuration, was previous to it. But again, it's merged back in, so I can spring it up here for you to mention. I did get comments from Dan, which I don't have any issue with the comments, but one thing I just have to talk about with the board is, one of the items calls for the delineation and location of wetlands. On this property, we do have several wetlands, primarily, it follows the drainage ditch from somewhat of a, we still leave part of the property and then runs southerly down to the southern part of the property. I realize it's in your code, but I felt at the time that we prepared this particular sketch that even if we were to take a hundred feet either side of that existing wetland, that we would still have more enough room to make our improvements. So I guess one of the things I would ask tonight is, would the board consider not requiring us to go any more further? Well, I'll say one other thing, I think I mentioned about soils, obviously, this, this, this particular subdivision will be served by either the existing wells that are there and/or new drill wells on each individual lot.
My first question is, why would you want us to waive the delineation of wetlands?
Well, because it's, right now, if I look at the, if I look at the parcel access and I look at the, where it's, where it's located, it just follows that drainage ditch, everything else is off the block, and we're not proposing any of this.
Mr. Schwark, would you like to comment?
Well, that, I haven't looked at this.
Right.
In detail.
Right.
The parcel I thought was, we were discussing is a different one.
Right.
I thought it was one directory behind, this is, this was the Dioria property, right? Yeah, yeah, it's a different section.
Right.
I haven't looked, I haven't looked at that.
Very good.
And we're not opposed to showing the wetland, I'm just saying to hire a wetland biologist to delineate and project so there will be.
Well, the, the problem with those maps is they're really only a general indication, that they're not very accurate at all. To show them on, on here would not be an, an accurate representation of where the wetlands are. So we, we use those maps as a red flag indicator that there's likely wetlands there, along with other indicators, hydric soils, you know, the presence of vegetation. So to, you know, for us to, you know, to suggest that, you know, the, the line on the wetland map is only, is very tightly, you know, confined to the, to, you know, the stream edge, is not really accurate enough for us to make an assessment on whether the project will have an impact to wetlands. And we have to sign off on that seeker, that's our document. So I, I'm not in favor, I, I think that we, we always, we rarely waive that with other applicants. I don't see the justification for this application. That's just my opinion.
I agree with you.
And I concur.
So that's a line after I have, I'll talk to you on the entry.
Dan?
I believe there was also a, another waiver request, wasn't there, Ernie?
A waiver?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, there was a, there was a waiver request on tree location as well. If you're familiar with the property, the majority of it is open. There is a grove up along Beach Road in the northeast area, I believe that was where proposed lot three was shown. And there's a number of trees around the existing, let's, estate lot, let's say. So, you know, the board might want to weigh in on that concept of the tree location as well, because that was a formal request of a waiver from the applicant.
To waive the locating the trees as per our code?
Yeah.
I would suggest, in that case, since it's a very tight grove, that maybe we locate the outside of the grove, and then we'll determine what trees, if any, would be disturbed, that would be something that would be, be considered to be shaven.
So there will not be any disturbance in that area?
Well, what I'm saying, if there is disturbance, we're going to have to show that. And let's say, let's say there's a little part of it that we would disturb, maybe at that point then we go in and we locate the trees. I suspect those trees were, maybe, I don't think they showed themselves, I think they were planted by man, and they were just, it's just a very tight grove, once you get beyond that, I suspect. So I thought we'd rather go in there and locate a hundred trees or a hundred fifty trees, locate the outer edge, and we'll see how that's going to affect our.
How would you characterize the property? Is there a lot of trees? What percentage of the site has trees on it, just in general?
I would say, I'm going to take five.
Most of it's open fields?
Yeah, it's, it's actively paved.
And so what you were saying, Dan, is that there's a grouping of trees in, in lot three area?
Yeah, that's lot three, proposed lot three is up in that area right there. So this is all agricultural fields in there.
Is there a stream that runs left, right through the property?
That's what the green, the green is, no, but the left, right, I think that's just a tree line. I'm not sure, I haven't been on there to see, but.
Yeah, that, that almost looks like a.
It does.
Unless it's either a fence, it's on a fence line or it's a, or a stream or something.
Maybe you can explain, if you'd like to come up here.
Kind of the, the left, right up there.
Here, there's a stream on the property, too.
Yeah, there is.
You see the, the cross?
Yeah. See, I know the one north, south, but the one that's going east, west, is that, are those trees located along a stream, or is that just a fence line or something?
East, west?
Yeah.
Right here?
Yeah, and, and up and down as well.
It's, it's just kind of land that's unfarmed, and it's, it's all, there's just not quite ornamental, it's just some trees that have been left.
Vegetation.
The big, the big trees just below the house, obviously, were planted, and they're considerable white pines. Other than that, like you said, there's the grouping up top, and I didn't make much notice of it, but I believe those are all white pines as well. But other than that, there's, there's no real major clusters of trees anywhere, and if any of these through here are, what's the recommendation, twelve inch caliber, and about?
By the end of, as the code progresses on, and as you progress in the process, it goes down to eight inch.
Probably not many, if any, through there.
So what would be the difficulty then in just identifying?
Well, I think what Ernie here was saying, the cluster, just showing the outbound of that cluster, instead of trying to get in there and locate every one.
Are you planning on, are you planning on taking any of those trees down? I'll tell you what, if you tell me right now you're not going to disturb those trees, I'll say then you don't need to survey them.
Thank you.
Well said.
Is it, but then I'll expect that to be on the plaque?
Oh, yeah.
That those trees have to be protected.
I feel that should be located, but rather go in there and locate whatever, how many trees are in there, locate the, the outer streams, and then if there's some areas of that that have to be disturbed to service our lot, then we go locate the trees.
I think he answered your question.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah.
Not exactly. What I said is, if you're, if you're telling me right now you're not going to disturb them.
Every tree that you.
Then I will give you the waiver. But if you're, if you're, what you're actually saying is, well, we may disturb it, and if we do, then we'll survey it. So, you know, are we going to have a hard time getting you to survey it later after you've already gotten your surveyor out there? All right, well, we're not going to proceed, we're not going to proceed to a public hearing, I don't want to speak for the board, but we won't proceed to a public hearing until we have all the information we need to make a decision. So as we proceed further, this is just a discussion right now, but as we proceed further, we'll need to know what your plans, where the driveway's going, where the house is going, and, and then if we see at that point that there's going to be some impact to those trees, we'll want to see them surveyed, is that okay with the?
That's fine with me, and I don't see any reason to provide a waiver right now, either, or vote on a waiver until we have more information in the detail that you spoke of.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, maybe I misspoke, I wasn't asking for the waiver tonight, I realize the sketch, but I want at least get it out and get into this discussion.
Understood, thank you.
But what about the, what about the trees that are in the middle? Are you planning on disturbing that?
As of right now, no.
No, because it looks like those trees seem to run pretty much through the larger lot, which is, which is not being disturbed in any way. Yeah, it's running, looking at the picture, it seems to be running kind of down through here, down towards the stream.
Right.
That's all staying in one lot, nothing's being touched.
So it's, we're, we're changing from farmland with groves of trees to now what you're proposing, right? So I think you can sense where we're going. You're going to have to mitigate the viewshed of what you're building with plantings. And preserving old growth trees is, is very important, because you can't plant an old growth tree.
Sure.
Right?
Makes sense.
Okay, so that's, that's what we are getting at here.
Sure.
Yeah, but I, I understand what you're saying, that a lot of those trees in the middle are in the middle lot, which is not really, it's one, remaining one larger lot. So there's no need to really disturb them, they're staying as it's.
And the owner was concerned, knowing we did a very early concept of this, he was very concerned about those trees that are on the north side of this house, main house. He wanted to make sure those stayed in place because he wanted.
Privacy. Yeah.
Right. I think he should, I think he should, I think he should.
John?
Yes, sir.
My question to you, Dan, is, in your letter of August fourteenth, you asked, I know we discussed briefly the wetlands, but in your, your letter of August fourteenth, you requested certain actions on their part. You still hold to that, don't you?
Yeah.
Because there's, it indicates for this letter that there's a stream on there, and there is wetlands on there, and they should be, or you should comply to his, the engineer's letter. Okay, that's.
Yes, sir.
That's my advice to the, to the board, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Schwark.
I mean, at this point, I would say, show the outlines, like you're saying, you know, the outline of the edge of the trees, including the ones in the middle, because that seems to be going in the line. And then we'll reserve judgment after we see with further development of the plans, and, and then if it truly looks like you're not disturbing them, we can waive it at that point, right?
Thank you.
Are there any steep slopes on the site?
I, I asked the question, the responsibility is for them to show any slopes, you're over fifteen percent under one thirty dash twelve, and then, and then from there, if there are, then we have to go into the requirements of one fifty-five fifty-three, which is our steep slopes ordinance.
What about fifty-two?
That's wetlands, water bodies, water courses. One fifty-five fifty-two was mentioned as well because of the, of the stream and the wetlands that were, are shown on the NWI mapping.
That I'd like to make sure that terrifies, the water bodies, the wetlands. Make sure that line in the middle is not a stream.
And, you know, there are. And, you know, there are DEC wetlands to the south, and there are DEC wetlands to the, to the west as well. And as you're probably aware, the DEC is really ramping up on new legislation regarding their wetlands and the hydraulic connectivity, and they start taking on more, in accordance with their rules, it sounds like they're going to start taking on more wetlands if there's connectivity, so.
So the law's going to result in more, more areas becoming subject to their scrutiny?
Right, and their, their, their legislation's more stringent than our legislation in terms of buffers and all this other, so.
And we need to be consistent from application to application, so it's very important to detail this. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a different area, I thought that was going to be a bit far behind my house. Because you had, but you kept saying beach groves, yes?
I lost my agenda. Okay.
That's one of my neighbors over here.
Okay, the next item under discussion is SEMCO Development Group, and I have a, I have a resolution to read for the minutes. This was prepared by the town council. Whereas, the Town of Beekman Planning Board has authorized the town engineer to move forward with a request for proposal for a review of the wetland delineation and potential impacts, mitigation of the proposed subdivision. And whereas, it is in the intent of the planning board to obtain additional environmental engineering for the planning board's consideration for the wetland and water course protection, which this board will be considering under 55-52 of the town code. And now therefore be it resolved that Cornerstone Associates be and hereby is employed and retained for the purpose of furnishing the planning board, its officers and agencies, such professional engineering advice and services as may be required, and shall receive compensation pursuant to its July 17th, 2024 engagement letter for such services as warranted by the planning board. And be it further resolved that the applicant is directed to consult with Chapter 75-6 for procedures and questions having to do with the employment of special counsel, consultants. Would any of the planning board members like to review this, if they haven't seen it, you know, before we motion?
So we're just authorizing the town engineer to hire this wetland delineation specialist?
Yes, they, they picked the second wetland specialist.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just for the record, we reached out to three wetland consultants, and we obtained quotes from two. We shared those quotes with the applicant, the applicant decided that the Cornerstone was the, the better consultant for them because of price considerations, so. And we're, you know, I can vouch for any of the three I reached out to, but, so, I'm happy to work with Cornerstone and have them provide consultation to this board.
I'm not familiar with the company, but I, that doesn't mean anything, I don't need to be familiar with them. I, if, you know, I see their qualifications, and if you think they're, they're fine and can provide an independent assessment, you know, you reached out to them, not the applicant, right?
Correct, that's correct. The applicant had asked us for a few stipulations, just to make sure that they knew when they might be going up to the site, and some other things in the email, but we'll make sure that that happens.
Dan, what do you, what do you expect them to find if the, what, what would you expect this expert would, wetlands, what, if he comes, what can he come back with, with holes or anything?
Well, so first...
As he can say, there's nothing there, which certainly, you can't say that, there's a, there's a stream there, intermittent or not, and you don't, you just don't put septic tanks over streams. Now, what, what would the wetland expert say? You're spending a lot of money, I know, maybe it's stir money, but either way, it's a lot of money, and what, what can he come back with, other than there's no wetland there, there's no stream there?
Right.
Then they could put that, but it's pretty obvious there is something there. Unfortunately, I can't, I'm not able to walk it, but there, there is stuff there, and I, I believe that Mr. Crane showed that there is water comes out of there.
Right.
Whether you see it or not, doesn't necessarily mean anything. And the bottom line is, if that is, there is an intermittent stream there, that's the headwaters, and when you screw up the headwaters, you screw up the whole stream, all the way through, all through the chain. So, I don't know what we're, I, I'm not quite sure what we're spending the money for, or anybody's spending the money for. If they come back and say there's nothing there, I, I don't think they can do that, but if they did that, then maybe Gillespie and company would have a case, but other than that, what, what are we getting out of that, that money for that wetland? Maybe, I'm, maybe I'm missing something.
Can I answer this?
The question I got is, I haven't seen this answered, maybe, because I haven't walked it, I don't know what I'm talking about, but is, is there another way to put that septic on the other side? No? Rather than where they got it, right on the top of the stream?
I'm not the designer.
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't know that till we have an accurate assessment. And the problem is, the whole reason why we're doing this, is because we've lost faith in what's been told to us.
Well, I know that.
So we started off with that it's not a stream, and then we, and the stream is over here, and then we, and, and there's been some dispute as to if there's trees there, if there, where there's tree, there's not trees. So, and then the initial assessment done, paid for by the, by the applicant's delineator, he, he did an assessment, but then didn't get surveyed for another, whatever, six months, I don't want to say how long, but long enough that they could have lost the flag. So we lost faith in that initial assessment. This action is for us to hire an independent, he works for us, right? He doesn't, and so, he's got the qualifications to identify wetlands, and he's, and there's no motivation to, or, there's no way, he, he works for us, he's, it's an independent study of it.
No conflict of interest.
Yeah, there can't be a conflict of interest, that's why we've availed ourselves of that ability to do that.
Who's paying?
The applicant.
But we pay him, right? We don't, it doesn't come from the applicant?
It has to come through the town, but it comes to the town through escrow, funded by the applicant.
So basically, we're the boss. They, they put money in the escrow account, and then we, we're the ones who authorize payment, so.
I'm curious, what are you going to find?
I am too. I'm absolutely curious.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah, and just, just so it's clear, there's a, there's a process. We have a lengthy process under 155-52, that's our Wetland Water Body Water Course Protection Ordinance. And the onus is on the applicant to provide this board with information so that you can make a decision on whether or not the action that they're looking to partake in on that lot is acceptable. So there's standards, and you have to follow those standards, and there's certain procedures that are delineated straight out in 155-52. And, and so, they have not necessarily followed all those, but this wetland specialist will be responsible for, number one, verifying that the delineation that they provided is accurate. And then, number two, is advising this board on how they do or do not meet the standards for the permit decision.
Yeah.
But this brings an interesting... Unless I'm incorrect, it's not our responsibility to prove, it's his responsibility to prove there isn't.
The, the onus is always on the applicant.
That's right.
And, and then we have to be able to corroborate the reports that they might generate, and...
It's our, Cliff, it's our responsibility to make the environmental assessment. We're the ones who say he's not disturbing wetlands, and, and we need the best information we can get.
I understand.
And that's what we're doing.
Thank you for that clarification.
But the, it does bring up another question. Are we going to survey those, that's not included in these services to do the survey work, we need to survey those flags?
No, so he's going to go out and verify in the field the flags that are there versus the survey that was given to us, and then he'll make an assessment as to the general accuracy of those or whatnot.
So he's just going to tell us if it's inaccurate or accurate? I mean, I'm hoping he's going to actually, if it is inaccurate, he's going to show us where the wetlands are?
That's, that's what they normally do, so.
Yeah.
In a case where, let's say you have a delineation performed, then there's somebody that's going out and doing this type of service, they'll say, well, you know, I actually feel like the lines went out a little bit further, because I saw the vegetation to support that, I, I did a soil boring, and I saw hydrolic soils, and, and there's certainly hydrology to support that that's a wetland. So then, they would have to go back out and re-flag and then resurvey the additional areas that the consultant would, would deem necessary for him to verify that delineation.
All right, I just don't want to get us caught back into the same problem, where I get, where I could see we're hiring him to go out there and review it again, but at some point, we need to see it on a map, and, and I don't want to have three months transpire, and then the flags get moved. I don't, I don't want, like, two days transpire. Anybody can move the flags.
I understand.
I'm not alleging any, any wrongdoing here, but...
I understand.
The integrity of that assessed delineation on paper depends on it being shown on paper right away, so, I don't know if there's something we could do to ensure that when we hire him.
And again, that's, you know, onus is on the applicant to some extent on that, I mean, we've got some high-level GPS location devices we could use, he may use those same kind of devices to at least be able to put together an outline of, of the wetlands as he saw them, and then we can compare that to the map, so, there, there are means for us to be able to do that.
So, maybe, you know, ours, our, our specific requirements and concerns can be communicated to the specialists, satisfy Rob's concerns, where it's located on a map?
Sure, absolutely.
And maybe in conjunction with a surveyor?
Once he becomes the consultant, you can also reach out to him as well.
Okay.
For sure.
Yeah.
But he, he intended on, you know, attending one or two planning board meetings as well as that process goes on, because the, the, the process is a permit that's issued by this board, and as part of that permit, there's a public hearing process. And that's why the public hearing has continued to be adjourned, because you may as well run the subdivision public hearing along with the wetland public hearing.
Oh.
Because as soon as you technically close down the public hearing for the subdivision, you're supposed to start the shot clock for making other decisions, and, obviously, we've had applicants that waived that in the past, but if they close this public hearing, they're just going to have to reopen another one just for the wetlands too, so.
Right.
It's kind of been a struggle, let's say.
Yeah, all right. So we'll watch this carefully.
Yeah, who's, who managed, like, who pays him, who, how does that work?
So he'll have to, you know, submit vouchers, as, you know, Craig or I would, to the town board, town board action, they, they go ahead and make the payments. Town board takes out of the escrow to do that, to fund that, and then as the escrow dwindles, they may ask for more replenishment depending on the services. So again, this is, this is constant with, I don't want to say it's a constant issue, but if you have a professional representing you, and, and they may not be answering the questions, it probably ends up costing them more in time and having to pay the consultant to continue to review the same product. So, it's really, it's really to the applicant's benefit if they follow through and address issues.
Not a common, not a common understanding.
The whole point of it is to make this more of an independent assessment from the consultant. It is, I don't want the consult, the, the applicant meeting or having the potential of the other wetland delineator to come out and consult with them on the, the assessment. Clearly, if I did the original assessment, I'm going to defend that, and if I go out to the site, and I, if I know when the new delineator's coming out there, I can go out there and have a discussion with him, and maybe bias, you know, how they do this.
That was a concern that I had.
It's important that he does it independently, and I'm not, I don't want to take the rights away from the owner, I think the right, he has every right to know when the guy is going to be out there, it's his property.
Yeah.
You know, absolutely. But I don't want him, he shouldn't be talking to the delineator, and he needs to allow the delineation person to do his work. Is there any way we can have you or the code enforcement officer out there at the time that does that?
Yeah, and in fact, the owner has offered for planning board members to be up there as well, so if, if, not necessarily when the wetland scientist was there, but I'm assuming that that offer's still on the table, and if any planning board member wanted to be present during that, that would be, I believe, would be fine.
The delineation?
I think the important point that Rob's making is that there should be no interference between the applicant and, and who we've hired. And I'm not sure how we can arrange that. If it means that you want to notify me, and I'm available, or Rob, and I'm, and he's available, or any other board member, that's one way. I'm not sure what other, you know, vehicles are available to us.
So why, why don't we ask them what date and time they'd be out there?
Mm-hmm.
And, and then from there, we can send out a, a notification, and, you know, what we wouldn't want to have is any more than three members, as, you know, then we'd hit open meetings laws restrictions, but, you know, if we had some representation, I think that would be more than acceptable.
We can also maybe ask Mr. Crane, I'm sure he would be very happy.
I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think Bill's walking up on that property.
Okay.
Not only that, but he's not really a member of this board.
Understood.
If we could just let the applicant know that, that he needs to allow access to the, for the work to be done, and not to interfere with the work, and just, you know.
Yeah.
Something simple.
You know, our, also who we're hiring as well should be notified.
Right, right.
That would probably be the best avenue.
He works for the planning board.
Yep.
Just so that's clear.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
All right.
This way we can get that behind us, put it to bed.
Absolutely.
And we can make a better assessment on this applicant, and we can move the application forward.
Any more on this topic? Can we move next?
Uh, was there a motion, a second vote?
Oh, right, sorry.
I don't know.
Oh, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution. Do you need me to read it out, or?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you like me to, do you want me to sign this now?
Uh, sure, sure.
I know, we should have ordered breakfast.
I'm not sure about the other items on there.
Good, have a short trip tomorrow.
I know.
You're not going to get out of Beekman.
The next item on the agenda is extension for Grape Hollow East subdivision. I believe you were going to handle that, Dan.
Yeah, so I, I actually prepared a draft resolution for the board's consideration. This is, it's getting a little old, to be honest with you, but the applicant has submitted a, a package to our office earlier this week, so there is some activity on it. a a package to our office earlier this week. So there is some activity on it. You know, I'd be happy to have a conversation with him. I'd like to see a little more urgency in the activity because this is a number of extensions that the board's considered and approved before. So at this point, it would be a 90-day extension that would be considered. And I believe that went through November 11th, 2024. But I can take a look at the draft here.
Is he making progress?
It had been relatively quiet until this week.
Okay.
Since the last submittal, so.
Now, there was an issue with surveys and other items there. Were those satisfied at least? Or am I confusing or confusing?
I'm not sure. This is this is more about the stormwater individual stormwater practices for each lot because it's in the DEP water.
Right.
Yeah.
Has that been resolved?
They're working on putting those together. That's.
Right. So basically, they have to get a DEP permit?
I'm sorry?
Basically, they have to get a DEP permit?
No, it's still it's still MS4 permit, you know, speedy's permit for construction activity. But it's they would only have to get a DEP permit if they disturb more than two acres. But overall, they're not over two acres with three lots. There's one existing to propose. So.
So.
But they're still MS4.
We have to be satisfied with their stormwater practice plan for each of those lots.
Correct, because we.
Are they cooperating with you? I know there was some.
Uh, yeah. So this week, we did get a pretty comprehensive package. So we're going to we're looking at that probably starting next week.
Okay.
In light of that, I'd like to make a motion to grant a extension of the conditional subdivision plat approval of Grape Hollow East subdivision until November. What was the date?
It is November 11th, 2024.
11th, 2024.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last item, pre-application, Plum Court, Lot 9.
Wow.
There really should be a prize, but I don't have one unfortunately.
99, I know.
I feel bad.
Who was running that?
But thank you.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's normal. You should have been here 40 years ago when Dalton was planned in this community. You couldn't find a breathing room in this room, right?
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your patience.
Good evening. I'm sharing members of the board. I'm Alex Dean from Walheim, California. I'm Alex Dean. I'm here with Fisher Martinez from Modella Association of勘察ers. Here, as a result of a surveying problem that dates way back, and just briefly, the subject that was reviewed in 2002, it was purchased by NCR, the ULC exceptional one lot in 2006. When the property was staked out, it was staked incorrectly. And then the houses were staked out by a different surveyor. That was wrong too. We had your litigation in much time with the planning board back in 2009, 2010. I'm here for that. A correction of most of the problems accomplished through the board, re-subdivided. Remarkably, there were 17 owners of other lots that had been sold by Lennar, and 16 of them signed up for the subdivision. I've never seen anything like that. Kind of cooperative and radical cooperative. One, however, did not. So we're to the one. And you mind if I go to the board?
Please.
Yeah.
The one is Lot 9 in the subdivision. And when your board approved the subdivision and amended to the subdivision in 2010, which was filed in 2011, the owner of this lot, which goes up to here and along here, wasn't involved. And the thought was that by keeping two strips that are separate both lots, Lot A and Lot B, if at some time he wanted to participate, we could take this strip, which he owned, which is effectively in what should be the road right of way. It lines up with the rest of the right of way if you look at it. This is where the right of way would be. So the way it is now, what's owned by the town goes to here and then comes out of here and then goes back. So what we are proposing to do is take these two independent lots that are owned by Lennar, convey them to me in agreement with them. He will, when we put in our home lot application, come and support it as attorney as well. Convey them to him, merge them. This is where the lot line change comes in. Merge them into this lot. And at the same time, he will convey the strip here that should be in the street's right of way to Lennar, and we will offer for dedication to the town and so the street. And and even and the town obviously has a choice whether or not to take it, authority maintaining the roads. This is just would be within the right of way would make sense to do that. There is a second part of this?
Yeah.
Turn it over. If I did this, we'd be here a long time.
This falls towards our goal.
The second part of this, I was very happy. I'm just kind of opening a laser pointer up against the screen, but I'll try. The second part of what happened here was when this subdivision was done because of the surveying error, there's a utility easement. From here to here, about 25 feet wide, Duchess County water on waste border, that goes from the road all the way back to here, there's a force main in it and a water main in it. And because of this surveying error, while neither of those are under the house on Lot 9, a significant portion of the easement is. So he is now in a situation where if he ever goes to sell a house, he has an easement that's theoretically available for sewer and water that goes right under the first five plus feet of the house. So my client agreed to make the mistake effort to get approval from your board and from Duchess County to allow that easement to be reduced within width. And there's a check area, it's in color on the plans that we gave you in red. That will be taken on the easement if we reconfigure in that shape. We talk to Duchess County water on waste border. And in the materials we gave you, we have an email exchange that says informally once you submit the description and go through the plan. Submit the formal plan to what I'm going to do. It doesn't make sense if that.
So that reduction doesn't limit the ability of the water main?
It does not.
Okay.
Actually, they're being closest to the house of the forest main. And there's not as much room between that and the house as they'd like. But Duchess has said they can deal with it. And neither the neither the forest main nor the water line are being moved. It's just it's just taking out a part of the easement that's under that house that doesn't give any assistance to Duchess County Waste Board or authority to do anything. They didn't have to never rent that house if they have to do maintenance, hopefully.
How do they allow how do they allow the house to get built on the easement? If this was subdivided and then they relegated an easement for the water line and sewer line, and then the person came in to build out his lot, he something went wrong. Somebody allowed him to build a house on top of an easement.
The surveyor who laid out the lot lines did them wrong. The surveyor who staked the houses did 18 houses in the wrong place. And the utility easement was based on within the correct place, but the house was in the wrong place. So when we came back in 2010 to your board, predecessor board, leader board, almost all of the houses were either in the zone except that, or a number of them were over the lot. It was it was remarkable that that was. There was that had nothing to do with the board. It became a major, quite a bit of litigation on the surveyors and the attorney company and the developer. It was a mess.
Something too.
He did nothing to do with it.
Neither did we.
It was just you absolutely did the subdivision. And Shaden didn't have the stakeout. Another surveyor got the stakeout. And shifts like that can happen if you're tying into a country county like this, if you're not, you're not surveying correctly. You're an inch somewhere, you're going to be all three feet somewhere, you know.
Is that water thing is not being used, the easement?
Oh, yeah. There's a force main.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And how?
But not under the building?
Oh, no, no.
How close?
Just the easement itself.
I was hoping it's to the building.
To the foundation, yeah.
A little over five feet.
What happened?
Wow, it's pretty close.
They did the the site plan for the guy's house. It didn't look like this is showing what it looks like as built.
Right.
When they showed the site plan, the house was not on the easement area because it was the survey was wrong.
And they staked it out wrong.
Yeah.
Correct. I mean, we have the old subdivision plan that shows the theoretical location of that house from 2002. It's not the actual location, but I can assure you it's much more centered on the lot.
Right.
I hope the fittings and the pipe, you know, the integrity.
The survey base information on the drawing was wrong.
What it needs to be, right?
Well, it was wrong in a few.
Yeah, yeah.
It created a.
Who would be responsible for the damage to your home in the event that there was a leak?
Title insurance company, probably.
That's a good question.
That's why you buy title insurance.
Yeah.
It's it's worked for, you know, this house was built in 2007. There's never been a problem. And I'm an attorney, so I wouldn't begin to say what I can do. But Duchess Waste Board said they can deal with it.
Right, right.
So I wouldn't second guess. So what we're asking you to do is to take these two separate pieces, which were shown on a previous plan, the triangle, it's about 0.2 acres, 0.2 acres, and a strip that is a square. He had a little bit of this now. This strip and this strip, they join them into this lot. It doesn't affect the buildability. They're completely separate from this lot, which is still owned by Lennar Lot A, and this lot, which is a detention basing lot, which can't be built on or built on. So what we're doing, the lack of anything else, is re-drawing lines in the field. And we need you to give us a lot line adjustment to do that. As to the easement, even though it's really inconvenient between us and Duchess Waste Board or authority, the notes on the plan we approved in 2010 that were filed in 2011, basically reaffirm the location for various reasons. And in order for us to do a regular review, we would need your board to.
Just change that.
Change that on the plan. Our hope is that we get enough direction for you so that when we come back in with, we hope we can proceed with preliminary subdivision, have a hearing on that and have your board go straight to final, the same meeting, true what was done last time, conditional final. Obviously, tonight, you're not making that decision, but we do need your input. And it is our hope that once we get it, we will relatively quickly give you a full package, full application for preliminary subdivision approval. I think we've given you the focus that we're going to underline materials that you didn't give you the actual application. We want to talk about if the lot line changed, so as was discussed before, we think it's a type 2 act, you know, for eleven board, still requires an EAF, but we certainly can do that at some preference. I don't think it's it's necessary. But what we're also asking for is number one, if there are any concerns or comments. And next, that's number two, there are a number of waivers that were listed in the letter from the subdivision matching requirement. Because frankly, we're not doing a general building. We're not limiting buildable lots. We're not allowing any development, proposing any development. So things for, and I totally like stating out wetlands, stating our contours, stating our trees, don't make sense on what we're doing. So we have a list. I don't think we can get through them. But if there is one list, again, if there are any injections, you can let me know. If you're an engineer, let us know. And otherwise, what we'd like to do is put together the application and get it to board.
I think that would be the first step. You know, get the application in so that the council and engineer can review and then advise us accordingly.
Makes sense.
Right.
Is there anything else that should take, give it to the board?
Well, I'd just like to say sorry for your hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's I'd like to say that. And it was a good presentation.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah, I don't have any concerns.
I would like to, you know, I'd like to turn over the rest.
Adam and I spoke quite a bit on the phone. And it was a human error.
Yeah.
He was very responsive.
It's getting late, too.
Yeah, it was clearly a human error. And I think that that the applicant should be able to proceed with most of these waivers. It's not all.
I don't have any issues with the application. It looks like you're trying to clean up a problem. And and it has very minor effects. There's no disturbance whatsoever that's going to occur as a result of this. So I don't have any issue with these waivers.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Next time, we see you hopefully.
And you'll be up.
Yes, please. You deserve you deserve to be first on the agenda if we can.
Adam, just Adam, Adam in your cover letter just mentioned the reasons why it's type 2. And and that don't don't submit an EAF with it, I would suggest.
Is in the letter that I will do the game?
Yeah, yeah. Well, just as justification for not submitting EAF, which is one of the application requirements. So.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you as well.
Seeing no other business to come before this committee, I would offer that we adjourn.
I kind of like it here now. Sorry, I'm not going to.
I need you to second.
I'm uncomfortable. I think I'm going to nod off right now. I second it.
I think it went better than we expected.
Yeah.
Right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, lordy. We're stuck. We're stuck to this chair.
I wonder if I'll get up at the right time.